Good evening. Welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 18th, 2023. This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconferencing pursuant to one MRSAA Section 403B, 2D, and Section 6 of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure as amended and adopted June 6, 2023. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using meeting ID 83433218889 and password 124885, or via computer at the webs at the link provided on our website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the Sanford City of Sanford website at www.sanfordmaine.org under Government, City Council, Contact the Council. You may do that after this meeting as well about this meeting. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you. I'll do the real call. Counselor Hitchcock?
Present.
Counselor Trenchmontang?
Present.
Counselor Martel?
Present.
Counselor Hanselman?
Present.
Counselor Stackpole?
Present.
My name is Maura Hurley. I'm the Deputy Mayor for the City of Sanford, and the mayor is absent this evening with notice. She let us know she would not be able to be here. And joining me this evening is the City Manager Steve Buck and his assistant, Laura S. Ricketts. The minutes for the City Council meeting of July 11th, 23-308-01, ordered to approve the minutes from the regular City Council meeting held on July 11, 2023. Could I have a motion?
Move we approve.
Thank you. Counselor Stackpole? Counselor Trenchmontang?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That is a vote of six to zero. 23-309-01, ordered to approve the minutes from the executive session of the City Council held on July 11, 2023. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Hitchcock?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Trenchmontang?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Thank you. Six to zero. I do not have a mayor's report this evening. Do we have any City Council Subcommittee reports or comments from the last week for official City Council business? No? Here we now, we do our City Council Subcommittee's last week, so it's not unusual to not to have comments. City Managers' Report.
Thank you. So Windows has done updates here. I'm trying to adapt to a new acrobatic format.
You do not do well with that.
No, they changed my world. All the controls are on the other side, and then most of them aren't there, so.
Just means you're aging.
I apologize. That's right. Old dogs, new tricks. The majority, almost all of my report tonight is about the homeless situation here in Sanford. So I wanted to provide an update to the City Council and the members of the public around that. The homeless asylum seekers and citizens. We have, those are two major categories. By all accounts homelessness, in all of its varying forms, hasn't continues to hit our city hard and without signs of relief. There are two major categories of people without housing at this juncture. The first is our recent immigrants crossing our country's borders seeking asylum and transported to our city. The second are residents of our country, predominantly residents of Sanford Springvale, who are without housing for a number of reasons, and those reasons have changed dramatically as of recent history. First category I'll communicate is the asylum seekers. Starting on or about May 1st of this year, the city started to receive an influx of asylum-seeking families, people in excess of 150-plus at one point, and resulting in an intake at that point in time of 28 families comprising approximately 135 people. The asylum seeker asylum-seeking people were housed under the General Assistance Rules, interpretation prevailing at that time for the initial 30 days of emergency housing in the only available space, which was two hotels here in the city. After that initial day period, the same applicants qualified for a next monthly housing allowance, which was in alignment with the latest interpretation of the GA rules as per the State Attorney's General's office, and that monthly allowance was used in the same hotel rooms, which only provided an additional two, two weeks of housing. So there were a lot of questions around that. So the weekly housing allowance is $1,056 for that type of a unit, and when you apply that towards the rates at that point in time, it houses them for significantly less than a month's time, and then they become homeless. So at the end of that, that six-week period, families were provided eviction notices to leave the hotels and were subsequently housed improperly in non-licensed or inspected facilities functioning as, I'll just say, emergency shelters. Those non-compliant shelters were closed, and a church provided a gymnasium that was inspected and stood up as an emergency private shelter on the short term. Difficulties with running the emergency shelter revolved around the inadequate facility, but mostly importantly staffing. When I say inadequate facility, it's not that it's a deteriorated facility, it's just a facility that's not specifically designed as a shelter having the appropriate facilities that you would have for a long-term shelter operation. The emergency, the emergency shelter was opened on June 15th at 5:00 PM. The shelter is now slated to close as of 8:00 AM on July 20th this Thursday. Originally, there were 28 identified families stemming from the initial influx, and we pledged to carry forward with those families and see them through the process. I want to state that the York County Community Action Corporation has been invaluable in this process, assisting the city in all steps, putting resources and significant manpower around these families. Since the shelter opened, we now see that there are 35 families that we're dealing with. So seven families were brought into the shelter against the original rules that were stood up for the shelter, but that being said, we're dealing with 35 families at this juncture. The current status is, again, 35 families up from the original 28. 27 families have been matched to permanent housing, which means they've been matched to an apartment. Out of that, 23 families have been moved into apartments to date. Four of those families will be moved into their apartments in the next 10 days, so there's some gap housing there. Eight families have not yet identified permanent housing, i.e. an apartment. On or before Thursday of this week, the remaining families will, four of those are going to private residences pending their housing placement in the next 10 days. Those families have been accommodated. Eight, the remaining eight families will be provided temporary housing options paid for through York County Community Action funds that have been made available for that purpose, as the housing navigators will continue to identify and place families into apartments. If no apartments are found in the next three weeks, the temporary housing will be discontinued, and they are, they have been assigned private homes that will take them in at that point in time. So to our knowledge at this point, there will be no one unhoused as of Thursday morning of this week, as it relates to the asylum seekers. So I again want to commend the, the quality of the work by York County Community Action Corporation, especially the housing navigators have been just beyond call as far as their ability to place these family units. So that would conclude the temporary emergency housing as a shelter, a shelter needs for the asylum-seeking families at the current count of 35 families. It has absolutely exhausted any form of capacity to house any asylum-seeking people or families that might come to Sanford in the future. They are also self-directed at this point in time to identify housing that might qualify for general assistance prior to any housing voucher being issued. Recognition is warranted, again, as I stated, of the city staff and the departments coordinating in this effort. Recognition must also be made of the York County Community Action Corporation for the exceptional coordination and assignment of resources in the form of cultural brokers, language interpretation, housing navigators, case managers, medical service coordination, and many other elements around this population. As a city, we could have not had a stronger partner than we have with York County Community Action. The next category, is there any questions on the asylum-seeking families at this point in time?
Any questions from the council?
This is a significantly better outcome than what we anticipated even a week ago. A lot has, yeah, a lot has taken place in the background around this. Our resident homeless, and when I say resident, this is because when we look at the, the assessment of the individuals that we're dealing with, in emphasis on individuals, the predominance of them were born and raised here in Sanford. This is their home, but they are now without homes. So there is a large and growing number of unhoused people in Sanford, the majority of which are Sanford Springvale residents or from the immediate surrounding area. Until recently, the majority of the unhoused population had comorbidity of substance use disorder and/or mental health, typically the combination of both, creating an unstable situation of economics and abilities to maintain work and housing due to the non-treatment of these combined issues. Four years ago was the creation of the Mental Health Unit inside of the Sanford Police Department specifically tailored to address these combined characteristics of substance use disorder and mental health. Initially, there was a population of approximately 50 people. The Mental Health Unit could identify individual needs, develop trust, and partner with York County Community Action Corporation and other agencies to address the needs to include substance use disorder, mental health, and ultimately housing. So at that point in time, I was standing proud that our city was large enough to muster and assign the resources, yet small enough to work with each of those people individually, identify the individual needs, address the individual needs. Our partnering resource agencies had capacities to work with those individuals as we identified that, as we are, as we could bring them in from the woods, so to speak. When they developed the trust with initially Deputy Chief Eric Small and now our Mental Health Unit officers, they would develop that trust. They would take, they would take the resources that were made available to them. They would come off out of the encampments, take the services, and ultimately we could get them housed and get their situations taken care of. Identities brought back, substance use disorder, mental health, ultimately getting them into housing, families as well as individuals. That population was managed well and decreased for about a two-year period. At this juncture, however, systems in place are breaking down due to, due to a lack of capacity and an evident change in the mix of homeless populations now including economically impacted people not associated with substance use disorder or mental health. There is an overarching crisis of capacities. Our recent statistics that, that in meeting with our Mental Health Unit this, this past Monday, yesterday, they have had year-to-date 136 unique contacts with individuals. Of that, 104 individuals are documented to be homeless. One half of that population has been homeless for greater than a year period of time. Again, I commend our Mental Health Unit. They do not just see somebody, they interact with these individuals, they document who they are, where they're from, what their story is, what their needs are, and they work to address those individual needs with every person. The homeless population is currently scattered across 116 mapped locations of active or recently active campsites across all of Sanford and Springville. It has become very difficult for the Mental Health Unit to manage and deal with and interact with these individuals when they're scattered across 116-plus locations, and they're not in one spot as far as daily interaction is concerned. We now have a number of current contacts with seniors and others who are no, who no longer can afford past housing and cannot relocate affordable housing given their income levels. These same people do not qualify for general assistance or other forms of public assistance readily available. Recent impacts, the peer counseling group recently closed on Washington, its Washington Street location as their lease is not being renewed. They have been in extreme difficulty in locating a new facility because their funding currently is for the next year, and their funding after that point is not currently been secured through the state. They're seeking a new location as they are funded but need a facility with a kitchen, restrooms, and other services. I do not, as the writing of this today, I have no word as far as their success in relocation. So a large population of people that had visited that center on a daily basis, no, no longer have facilities to go to during the daytime to receive counseling, to use restrooms and other services, and you now see them congregating about the community. One of their primary congregation points is the Central Park. They come there during the day and they sleep for security purposes, and then they wander at night. Encampments have become scattered as there are no services for a homeless population in the downtown for toilets, laundry, or showers. The Mental Health Unit spends substantive time addressing people scattered across these 116 locations and others. Centralized services or resource hub is of a high priority. Businesses are also complaining about trash, unsightliness, vacancy, and request for facilities. Administration has established now a biweekly coordination meeting with the Mental Health Unit, and York County Community Action has agreed to come in again as our service partners in this regard. We're going to springboard from all of the work that's been done over the last two months with the asylum seekers and keep that same organizational structure in place to address our resident homeless population. It has been a continuous discouragement that I can locate significant resources around asylum seekers, but it's almost impossible to locate anything similar to that to our resident homelessness, homeless population. I can't express that strongly enough. If you speak to your elected officials, you need to make them aware that that is a current and ongoing situation. So for example, under general assistance, we're mandated to account for those people qualifying as asylum seekers to issue them a housing voucher to a qualified location for up to 24 months, two years. Many times that doesn't reach the dollar value of what that rental is. There's another organization that provides the gap. There is no such existence of anything like that for our homeless population that are not asylum seekers. So we're now refocusing our efforts towards our population that is here that are not asylum seekers to provide that same level of service. Our initial assessment provided action items that need to be addressed in the short term and immediately in the following areas. First was to reestablish the Counseling Center, which is a very needed resource in our downtown, again, for all of the services that they provided, and also to provide a bricks and mortar location for the main access points, which is the needle exchange program, which I believe we likely will have people here speaking on that tonight. That has been a difficulty. Let me explain. Main access point is a state-licensed needle exchange program. What are the difficulties with that? During COVID, there was a change in how that program was administered. My opinion in reading the statutes and my observation is, it's no longer a needle exchange program. It's a program that, that passes out needles and all of the other apparatus needed to take these particular drugs under the pretense that it's a public health coverage to prevent HIV, AIDS, and other bloodborne pathogens being transmitted using dirty needles. The issue that I have is that the program seeks to address public health in one area but creates public health difficulties in many other areas. Large quantities of needles are being utilized for that purpose and being inappropriately discarded along public trails, public areas, playgrounds. Our staff sweeps through all of our public facilities every morning, and a large part of that work is picking up needles. That is broken. We're seeking to address that. The better model is not for an outside program, but to have a bricks and mortar location where that program can take, take place inside in more appropriate levels of access for discussion around counseling and other areas can be addressed. The next is for the need for temporary portable housing solutions. We have been checking there, there is what they call pallet homes that can be stood up. They're costly, but they're effective. We're seeking communities that have stood them up. We thought Lewiston, Auburn had stood up, but apparently they have not. I have communications into ACAP, adjacent parent. I know him, know him well from my time there in Arustic. They have stood up facilities there, so we're seeking more information on that, on cost and the ability to stand that up. We have the recognition that we have a large population that, a larger population of homeless now that for the first time likely will not be able to dissipate into other people's homes and couch surf during the coldest parts, times of the winter. The next piece is to stand up the Lafayette School. That has been, that is to go under contract with our school department. The York County Shelter Program has been awarded $700,000 to stand up a warming shelter as well as a resource hub there. That should start to replace some of the critical services that have been lost. He would, just a moment, Excuse me. He would address some of those lost services and also have, provide for short-term interim sheltering operations as part of that mix. We have also talked with the state as far as the assignment of resources. Currently, York County has 39 beds for sheltered operations. Let me repeat that. York County has 39 beds for shelter operations. 39 beds. That's at capacity long before COVID, long before these other impacts hit. It's at capacity any day of the, of the year, say nothing about during cold weather. 39 beds for all of York County, the second most populous county in the state. When I look at the amount of resources that have been assigned to and expended in Cumberland County, the most populous county in our state, for obvious purposes, the number of homeless population that is there, I see an inequity that I'm seeking to reconcile with state officials to get greater resources assigned here to York County for these purposes. We've also talked with state officials about the Housing First program. That's money that is in the supplemental budget. It won't be available until October, but we're lining ourselves up to be one of the first applicants whereby a developer would privately develop with access to state funds, 44, up to 44 for us transitional units whereby the staff 24/7, the people can transition into that housing situation, have 24/7 support, address their substance use disorder, mental health, and other issues, get them prepared for living outside of that environment, transition them out, and then continue to backfill. Our discussions also centered around the lack of capacities, and we are seeking to pursue state and federal resources to address such areas as mental health beds and outpatient services. We have 45 mental health beds in our community. They're full, they're understaffed, they're underfunded, and getting out, access to outpatient services for our mental health clients is limited at best. Substance use disorder, there is a greater need for evidence-based counseling and prescription treatment around the occurrence of opioids and other illicit drugs. Transitional housing until permanent housing can be found, and also an increase in permanent housing. So the state talks significantly about the need for permanent housing. They typically focus on housing around workforce and low to moderate income. There's a need for focusing in many other areas around that as well. And I won't go into some of my discouragements with, with that. The state implemented LD 2003. We're working on increasing our housing density allowances and such under that. Well, when legislation was sponsored specifically to ask for the higher use of tax increment financing and for the state to forego sales tax on these new developments such that it could be more affordable as far from a constructability standpoint, state legislatures stripped that out of the legislation, and that's no longer there. So the state did not partner well as far as that initiative was concerned. So we seek to address the incremental deterioration of enforceability for illegal activities as well. Many of you might ask why individuals are not summons for criminal trespass, drug possession and use, loitering, littering, illegal entry, and other such aspects. As the propensities of these occurrences continue to arise, and the capacities to address these areas are greatly exceeded, has been gradual changes that now prevent the use of these prior enforcement tools. And I'm referencing the Homeless Crisis Protocol. So our department has come into compliance with the Homeless Crisis Protocol. I've attached this to my documentation. It is essentially a document that's put out by the State Attorney General. It's a declaration of public policy that we have to adhere to, and our department has put the policies in place. It defines a homeless person, a law enforcement agency, and then it lists a number of offenses, those that I've earlier referenced, as to if you encounter somebody that identifies themselves as homeless, you will not, you will not solicit them as far as any of these crimes are concerned. So that may answer some of your questions as to why some of those tools are not being utilized. So I think I've given you a broad sweep on what's taking place out there currently. Please note that the city has put significant emphasis, I've just been told I've got two city councils that are going to be dedicated to those biweekly meetings, and I seek to bring that to the council on a biweekly basis as well, because there's a lot of action that needs to take place here in a very quick fashion. If there's no questions on that, I'll move to one last topic that I was asked to, to give you, and then I can come back to that. The Vietnam Memorial Wall that's coming to Sanford, there's been a lot of questions around that. We initially worked with the Qantas Club and the veterans groups around hosting the traveling memorial wall that's coming to, which is the Vietnam Memorial Wall, which is coming to the City of Sanford. We first worked with them on all possible city locations to the point that those were exhausted as not being viable. It's a fairly significant amount of land that they have to have, and a lot of our parks facilities could not be utilized because the way the structure has to be staked into the ground, and we have underground irrigation in those fields, thus couldn't drive the stakes and such under that, parking facilities and such. So they now have located their, they've worked with a number of private property locations as well, thought they had one for quite a period of time, and finally had to abandon that. Now they're down to the vacant property that's across the street from the Walmart at the traffic light. It's owned by two individuals, two, two different property owners. They've just been given the building permit to put gravel and grading, grading in there for the, for the development of the event, for which they'll have to remove there afterwards because otherwise they would have gotten into a full number permit with DEP because they're disturbing more than an acre of ground. We also worked with the Maine Department of Transportation as far as that traffic light, the fourth leg can be easily turned on and implemented for that. So please look forward to, they will come here on September 6th to set that up. They'll stand it up from September 7th through the 10th of this year, and they have a website up for your information now. It's called The Wall That Heals, Sanford, Maine, Sanford ME. But it's all spelled out. It's one where they have a very nice website up, stood up, so you can look for information there. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna ask again. Do we have questions? Anything that he spoke about this evening, mostly regarding asylum seekers and the homeless situation? As you know, this is just the beginning of our conversations and the work that we're going to be diving into. So, okay. Thank you. I just think, yes, it was a great report. Thank you. Just, okay, go ahead.
The only thing I'd like to do is be better educated on the Housing First model with Diane Small. If we could all have like a workshop or something, because she's the one.
I think we're planning, we're definitely planning a housing workshop for August, September, and that I think will take, that will be a good part of our conversation. I agree with you. So it's to understand it and to realize how it would work well.
Yeah, and you covered everything else that I had for the homelessness. So nice job, Steve.
Well, can I, I'd like to cover another area though, because I think I'm recognizing some business owners here that are going to bring this concern up. So the, the Heritage Street Parking Lot was, was a hill that was taken back a number of years ago. The hill, so to speak, has been lost. So there's, there's an encampment that's reestablished down there because of its proximity to the downtown, proximity to the river, it's a wooded area, such under that. There's litter down there now, there's unsightliness and such under that. That property's being taken under control tomorrow. There's going to barricade off the entrance to that point. Crews are going in to clean up the trash, cut back the brush and stuff, remove the debris. It's, it's, it's the rinse and repeat. It's back to people taking food down there, sleeping bags and other products and stuff that's just littering in the woods and such under that. The, it's the balance of helping people versus simply not addressing the situation. So I'm going to work with those individuals to move them out of that area and get them to appropriate services. They're also giving, the mental health unit is also delineating the list of individuals, again, so that our resource partners have pledged to take those in blocks and move them to the appropriate level of, of individuals. For example, the, seniors that are economically displaced, that's a separate group that can be worked best with certain housing navigators and other resources, the SUDs and the mental health, that's another category that can be moved. So we have that work ongoing that will be, come to us later this week.
And just so people can get used to this lingo, substance use disorder, MH, mental health, these are things we deal with on a daily basis here in our community, in many communities. Just to restate something that you did say, every time we have a crisis, everybody wants to help, and we find that when you choose to bring product, when you choose to bring food, actually it worsens the situation and makes it more difficult. I, I hate to say this, because I know there's a lot of generous souls out there. I think it's best if you work through York County Community Action of the City, and maybe the, there are better solutions to, to going to them. There are a lot of church suppers and stuff where it's, it's a better situation. I know a lot of people who do this work don't agree with that, but it does actually work better, and it helps us to not have congregation in the place where you're going. We can, we can work on those problems. So I just wanted to point that out, because that's kind of what he was stating. There's a lot of good that people want to do. It is better to work through agencies that are set up to do that. York County, and you can offer to them, and they help you set up, and they can help you set up in a better way. That actually is more helpful and better organized and allows us to also make contact at the same time.
They've, they've been able to take in cash, food, clothing through the organized agencies that are already there, doing the distribution. That's extremely efficient. It's non-wasteful. We've had donations just dropped off when the asylum seekers were all in.
It ended up in a dump. It ended, all that stuff that they dropped for asylum seekers ended up in a dumpster. They did not want all of that stuff. It wasn't their size, it wasn't what they needed. Just bringing stuff without any idea of what they need is what he's saying. Am I?
Yeah, so we have a website set up. There's a list, list that you can, you can go there. It's very organized. You can make those contributions and such. You can sign up for man-hours as far as doing volunteer work around that. So there's, there's a lot of exceptional work there. And as long as it stays coordinated, it's been extremely beneficial. The detrimental part is when people have gone out around that system and the mayhem ensues.
It, it causes more problems than it actually solves. Okay, so I do want to let everybody know that Mayor Brink has joined us for listening purposes. She does not have great internet access, so, but I do want everybody to know she is here. She's not participating as a city councillor, but she wanted to listen to this discussion this evening, as I had called her earlier in the day. Okay, so communications and presentations, there are none. The next is public participation. So public participation in our rules of procedure, three minutes per person. We do not comment or ask questions or answer questions back and forth. We want the information. We take notes of the information. We take notes of the questions. If you're speaking specifically on the homeless or asylum seekers, we, for the most part, are dealing with all of that through our Public Safety Subcommittee, which meets the second Tuesday of every month at 11:00 AM via Zoom. So it's very easy to attend. It's very easy to ask questions at that meeting as well. So I have four people signed up here. If you haven't signed up, just raise your hand once the first four have gone. And also, if you're on Zoom, raise your hand. We're going to have our administrative assistant take notes of who's going to speak after the people who are here with us this evening. So first I have Jason Royce from ThreeRangerFoundation.org. Good evening.
Good evening. All right. All right. Thank you, councilpeople, for having me this, this evening. And, you know, it was really nice to hear about some of the great things that is going on here in Sanford. But there's some other things that are going here on Sanford that don't so, sound so great on paper. And for, again, those of you that don't know me, I'm Jason Royce, from the Three Ranger Foundation, advocate for disabled veterans and the elderly here locally. I grew up and went to high school here in Southern Maine. I left 11 days after I graduated to leave for Third Ranger Battalion in Fort Benin, Georgia. Been to Afghanistan three times, Iraq one time. The only reason why I bring that up for you is I'm not even here to talk to, for myself today. I'm here to talk for some people that aren't even able to be here, and I think there's some things that you can do to help out. So as far as it goes, what does the Three Ranger Foundation do? We work with SEALs, Marine Force Recon, Rangers, ETACs, JTACs, the people that control the birds that go overseas. You don't see me a lot. I take care of a lot of those guys that come in. We like to take care of our own here locally, so I field a lot of those calls. So I'm sure you can imagine there's a lot that comes with that for newly special operation soldiers coming back here to Southern Maine to find a homeless crisis that is going on. They have jobs. They have money. They want to live here. But there's some other things that I'm going to tell you a story about here of why they can't do that. The disabled and elderly, they have money. Local police officers, retired police officers. I love that we're taking care of people coming here to the city, but what about the people that built it? So let me tell you a little story, and this is not so pretty. I tell you my background because I get a bit intense, but you told me to go find bad guys in 2003. I did a good job. I got them. So I'm here back now, and I see some bad guys, and I don't see any fingers being pointed at them. So let me tell you a little story. Universal Property, New Hampshire Company Portsmouth, New Hampshire took over the building right next to where the support center was. That was taking care of all of the homelessness. And due to corporate greed, they have raised the rates, excuse me, due to corporate greed, $600, one bedroom, one bathroom, to $1,600, not to include electricity, internet, any of these things. That's not even my problem. We can figure it out as a community to pay for rent. Here's the issue. The elevator has been broken for 22 months since the pandemic. Why am I, why am I upset? It's not me. I could do those stairs. I've redacted the names of these people because they're not here with us to speak. Linda Thibodeau. Linda Thibodeau. Seventeen Washington Street. No handicap accessibility. Elevator, broken, burned alive. Apartment 312. Michael J. Doobie, retired police officer. Sanford, Maine! Sanford, Maine.
Wait, wait, look at, hey, hey, hey. No yelling. We're listening without the yelling. We don't need the yelling. You're passionate, and you have a minute left. Go ahead.
I'm close here. So as far as it goes, Michael J. Doobie, local police officer, 20 years. He, he retired. He moved across the street. The elevator broke. Heart attack, died. Steve S. Johnson, local firefighter, heart attack, died. Richard D. Emery, local paramedic, died. Why? Universal property, corporate greed, landlords coming to Southern Maine to wring out the pockets of disabled veterans, the local elderly. Who do we call? Well, you said, reach out to the, to your congresspeople. I've called 30 times. I'm a student at the, at the CFA institution in Boston. I wrote economic letters to everybody, to the Senate, to Congress, to no avail. So I'm here today asking for your help. Please take care of the local disabled veterans. Please take care of the local elderly that need our help. We love what you're doing here with the homeless, but take care of the people that built this city. Again, I'm from the Three Ranger Foundation. If you have any veterans that are having some type of issues, I know most of the programs here locally. I field those calls for the people that are not so fun, that people don't like to actually deal with. That's who I deal with. And the reason why I do that is because I am a veteran, and I grew up here. So I left when I was 18. I'm now 37, so 20 years. Here I am. Thank you for hearing me today. Again, if you want more information, you can go to ThreeRangerFoundation.org, and you'll probably see me walking my dog right across the street here, because I live in that same building with the broken elevator where people keep dying because no one will do anything. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. And thank you for the comments. And as everybody noticed, too close to the mic, we can't hear you. It garbled. If you have anything that you needed to share beyond that, you can definitely send it via the website. Okay. Lisa DeHaven from Rand and Company.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
So my problem is, I work at Rand and Company, and we have all the homeless down there in the woods, and they also do the needle exchange right at the base of our parking lot. Yeah, I know you probably need that in town, but you don't need it at the base of our business. What it does is it brings in, all these drug addicts come, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and sometimes Friday. They block our parking lot. They come into our building. They shoot up in our bathrooms. They scare our clients. We're losing business. So we just want it moved. That's what, they're staying down there because they, they get their, their drug stuff. They go down in the woods. We walked down there the other day, some of us, and is, it's, it's traumatizing. It's horrifying down there. They're, he, the, the needle guy says, I'm picking up all the needles. I take care of it all. They are all around the mills. They're shooting up everywhere over there. They have no shame in their game. They're going to sit right down on the ground when they get their needle and put a needle right in their foot, right in front of you. We took pictures of it. We saw it. And the girls are scared to leave at night. Right after the last meeting, the last one they had, they came into the building, came into our salon screaming. They needed some stuff. They needed cups. They needed this. They had to be escorted. We had to lock ourselves into the salon. I wasn't there. The girls were there. We have young girls that work there. It's scary. I feel, I used to own the salon, so I feel responsible for all these girls. They're scared to leave at night. I'm trying to make sure they all have mace so we can leave our parking lot for, for our business that's, we've been there for 10 years already. Just signed a new lease. Wish we didn't. So we want it moved. We would love it to be moved to, we asked him today, can you move to the other end? No, the people that have the marijuana plant don't want us there. We don't want you here either. Why don't you move to the parking lot across the street? Because that's the towns, and they don't want us in it. We have a permit from the state. They have to be on that corner. They can't move from that corner, apparently. They can't move down a ways, so they're not blocking our roadway. So they come in, they, they, people deliver food. No one takes the trash. The trash pile is so huge now. Rats are out there. It's, and rats aren't, these aren't little rats. These are giant rats. And so the tenants are scared to come out at night to bring their trash to the dumpster. There's probably rats in there because they're bringing them up into the building. We walked around today. There are needles everywhere. He says, we pick up all the needles. I picked up 1,000 today. You gave out 10,000. So you're not picking them up. You're, you're just letting, you're just standing in your little spot, and he's out there promoting heroin. He's out there telling people, I'd like to make heroin legal. That's my plan. This is what I'd like to work towards. That's the guy that's sitting at the end of our parking lot, scaring our customers away. They don't just stand there and get their needle. They lay out in the parking lot. They take naps right out there. There, there's a lady that was living in a parking space, like it was an apartment, just sleeping in a sleeping bag. I mean, and nobody, nobody does anything. We have called all the time. We have to, in the morning, we have to go make sure there's no one under the stairwells. We have to make sure there's no one in the bathrooms to harm our clients before they come into the salon. It just needs to be moved. We do not, it's, no one else has it in front of their business. Nobody wants it in front of their business. We don't want it at Rand and Company, because it's really, we have a lot of single moms that work there. Our money is going right down the tubes because we're, people are afraid to come in there. And I mean, I was down there today. Just today, I think we intimidated everybody at first. The needle people didn't want to come in and get their needles, and they kept driving by, driving by. There was so much traffic. And then they finally started coming in. They shot up their drugs. They're brawling. The whole police department had to come down there today. No client is going to, they're going to keep driving. They're not going to pull into that mess as they're coming through. But that, so when I left work today, they were all laid on the sidewalk, like they're at the beach, just hanging out, doing their drugs right there in front of everybody. They don't care. And so we would love to see it moved to the police department. I know that upset the needle guy, because he told me, he's been in this business for a year, and I'm going to ruin his business. I've been a business owner in this town for over 30 years, and they're ruining my business. And, you know, I do everything I'm supposed to do. Every little permit I have to get, I do it. I do everything. People are stopping now to drop their trash off in this big pile, because why would you buy an orange trash bag when you can just dump it here? Everybody else is.
I, I hear you. We are working on a possibility for, but it does, your comments are very helpful because it actually gives me an idea of where it shouldn't be, more than anything, because it does seem like it, it causes.
It's bad. It's scary. They're scared. We're scared to leave at night. We all try to leave together now. It's ridiculous.
Thank you for the information. Okay. Thank you. Very well done. Thank you. Emily Rand from Rand and Company. I would assume a new owner here? See, we know Lisa. Yes. We are like really casual people.
I know. I'm just, I feel bad. I feel guilty. And I heard you say, you know, some of these people are Sanford residents. I'm a Sanford resident. I was born here. I was raised here. I owned a home here. I own a business here. And I'm very sad today that it's coming to this, because I've been complaining for months and months, and now I'm just embarrassed. And it, it's just coming to a head, and I don't want people, and I'm not going to say names, but we complain. We send emails. My neighbors Great Bay send emails. They're passing out drugs here. They're passing out needles. A woman came into our salon Friday screaming, get me the fuck out of here. Where, I can't get out of this building. You're not supposed to be in here. You're not supposed to be in here. Right? Everybody here owns a business in this town. I want you guys to have one turn. And I'm trying to be nice. I have family members in programs. I have a family member in jail with addiction. I'm not, I feel bad for these people too, but I feel bad for my girls that I lock in and I check the bathroom. I go to the salon every morning an hour early to look under the stairs, look in the bathroom, call dispatch from the parking lot, tell them there's people here. I'm just like, I love Sanford. I'm from Sanford. I met my husband in Sanford. I'm Sanford proud, but I'm done, and I don't feel like you guys care. I feel like it's out of sight, out of mind. If this needle exchange was on Main Street, the whole town would put you on blast. You would be, nobody sees it. It's a very small population that gets their hair done at Rand and Company and lives in that building. In this whole city, that's a tiny little bit of people that come down there. And it trickles on me, and as you can see, I'm, it's affecting my health. It's affecting me because I have 15 girls that work for me. They each have 50 to 100 clients. Their clients come in. Someone's dead in your parking lot. Someone's in your bathroom shooting up. I just, my kid just saw someone shoot up between their toes. They tell their stylist. The stylist tells me, I'm, I'm in the middle of a nervous breakdown. I know that's not your problem, but I don't want it to be mine anymore.
Your, your health is an issue as well, so.
Well, I'll be fine, you know, but it's like, it's been poo-pooed for too long, and this is not what I wanted to happen. What happened today, what happened last Friday is not what I want. I feel bad for people. I do. This is not how I want this to go down. You know, I don't want Sanford to be on the news that, you know, we're so horrible. Again, I'm trying to support our community. I've owned rental properties in this town for decades, and now I'm regretting signing the lease on what's supposed to be up and coming in the downtown. That restaurant's empty. When people ask me about it, I tell them they don't want to be in there. You don't want to come here, because it's a problem. And, and nobody cares. I call the police. I call dispatch. I call the homeless task force. I, again, my neighbors Great Bay couldn't be here tonight. They CC me on emails, and it's still, and the trash has nothing to do with the homeless people. The amount of trash that gets dumped on Heritage Crossing is disturbing. And every day I leave Shapley, my, and I pull onto Heritage Crossing, and I have a rock in my stomach. I'm not, I used to be happy. I was so happy to take over the salon from Lisa, and we would work together. She would stay, thank God, because she's stronger than I am. And now I have huge regrets. I don't, I just feel like, you know, you're supposed to be happy to go to your business, your small business, and I feel like you're, you're not supporting me.
Okay. Thank you for, thank you. We're going to try to support you.
Thank you for speaking.
Yes. Dan Rand.
Hello. I am Emily's proud husband. Did a great job.
I think you're going to take care of her tonight.
Yeah, she's good. I don't want to make a big deal of this either, right? I mean, obviously, there's a problem. It's a needle exchange problem, right? That feeds heroin into these people, or fentanyl, or whatever they're shooting up. It creates more demand for the drug. We feel as though there's drug deals going on there. We're inviting more drug sales into our state and into our city, and it really needs to be addressed. Are the needles a safety hazard? The garbage, I don't know how, how many of you have actually seen what's going on down there? I feel like it's out of sight, out of mind. Right? Have you seen it?
I was down in there today.
Have you walked down to the river?
I haven't walked down to the river.
I did.
I was horrified.
What is going on at the river? What river is that? It's malsome. People are defecating in the river, urinating in the river, washing themselves, throwing trash, sending it down the river. Right? We really need to know what you guys are going to do to fix this problem, right? And it needs to be a priority.
Thank you.
That's pretty much what I got to say.
And I appreciate your words.
Ace said the rest.
Thank you. I have on line Diane Connolly.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Ms. Connolly.
Thank you. My name is Diane Connolly from Springvale. I'd like to make a comment, if I may, on City Manager's comments this evening in his report. And ask, if it's all possible, that this document that the Attorney General signed about how they're going to go ahead with enforcement and change how they're doing enforcement with criminal trespassing, I'd like to see that put on the city's website. So, citizens can actually see what those laws are, what they're going to, what the City of Sanford Police Department is going to enforce, and what they're not going to enforce. Having had a problem here at my residence with someone trying to get into my house, you know, and it was four other houses before he got to me, and then being shipped off to a hospital and not being charged with criminal trespassing, doesn't cut it in my book. Neither does the rest of the residents in this neighborhood who've had their cars stolen, broken into, and so on and so forth. We as citizens who live and paying the taxes of the city would like to know what you're going to do to help us live in our neighborhoods with this ongoing problem. Right now, I've got a problem with some people that aren't supposed to be on my property, and I'm going to take care of it. If it, if I can't, I will call the police and have them escorted out of my property. But it's going on everywhere. And citizens and people that have property need to know what to expect. Because right now, I have two big orange ungodly signs on my property that says, "Stay out, keep out, no trespassing." I've had to sign my property and keep people out of my property. So, if the manager would be so kind, or someone put that on the website so we could have some information going forward, it would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Connolly. I have Will Hurley from Main Access Points.
Hi, everybody. My name is Will Hurley, I'm the York County Director of Harm Reduction for Main Access Points. I'm also known apparently as the Needle Guy. I'm going to stick to my prepared remarks because I don't want to get into a back and forth. And I just want to say I'm not immune to some of the complaints of the small business community. I'm sorry that your business has been suffering. I think we all have to deal collectively with issues in our community. And the work that we do as a syringe exchange program is really just a small part of the care that our community needs, right? Our work is very specific. It's a specific form of public health intervention that is necessary and has been statistically proven to be effective at reducing disease and death for over half a century now, right? The data is there that shows that syringe exchange programs do not create more syringe litter, that they actually lead to less syringe litter, right? I don't have the data from the last six months, but the prior six months previous to that collected over 400,000 syringes in York County, right, and disposed of them properly. A lot of the metrics that we would use to define the success of a program like ours exist in the negative, right? I'm able to see from reports back from my participants that we've reversed over 500 overdoses in the last year. So, that's, you know, that's not 500 individuals, could have been multiple overdoses for one person. But we know that 500 overdoses were reversed as a result of our services, right? We don't know what the overdose rates, what the HIV rates, what hepatitis C rates would look like in the absence of a program like ours, right? But we know that they would be a public health crisis. I'm here because these conversations inevitably emerge. This isn't the first time I've had a conversation like this, this isn't the first city I've had a conversation like this. And, and these, these conversations come up anytime a community is dealing with issues related to substance use and homelessness. Every few years, they come rolling back around, and in the absence of new solutions, they don't change. Often, there are calls for more punishment. You cannot arrest your way out of these problems. Arresting people for using drugs or for being homeless does not work. If it worked, we would have seen its effectiveness in the last 50 years, right? So, we have to start talking about some new solutions. And I want to talk about solutions and about positive change, but I just want to preface it by saying that anyone who tells you that they can solve these problems completely, they're lying to you. Either they're lying to you in the hopes of impressing you and gaining your support, or they sincerely believe they can such, they sincerely believe they can solve such problems, in which case, at a sheer egoism, they are lying to themselves and to you. I will not lie to you. Substance abuse and poverty are unfortunate realities of the world that we live in. People are not going to stop using drugs. The conditions that create poverty will likely be slow to change. The sober assessment of these problems is not always the most satisfying, but I say this as a man who has labored long in the trenches of these issues for many years, as both a social worker and as someone who has struggled and recovered from substance use. A perfect solution will remain elusive, but these problems can be mitigated. The harms associated with them can be reduced. This is a large part of what our work at Main Access Points is about. There are a number of reforms that would work to improve the health, dignity, and well-being of all community members. More housing, more recovery supports, more social services and the like. Myself and Main Access Points are committed to working with the city to actualize such reforms. Yet often, when I hear the cries and wails of those complaining about the starry state of things, I see little action from such people. There are those who will move their mouths all day but cannot get them to move their, their hands or their feet. We're all looking at the same messes. Some of us already have a shovel in our hands and are hard at work trying to clean it up. I encourage those with a genuine desire to see improvement in their community to roll up their sleeves and pick up a shovel and join myself and other members of this community in directly addressing these issues. More immediately, one small way we can accomplish this is through coming together in community to clean the spaces we live in. Main Access Points is doing a community cleanup. On July 29th, we're going to meet down by the corner of Heritage and Weaver with trash bags, gloves, and all sorts of stuff, and we'll have some food and water there as well. We invite all members of the community to come join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now that you see how easy it is, is there anybody else in the audience who would like to say a few words who has not already spoken? Yes, Jen Davy. You know how easy it is, you should have put your name on the list.
Sorry, I'm late. I just wanted to give my feedback, Mr. Buck. I looked on the mobile site, so I just wanted a clarification of the services you said that were listed on the site. Was that in reference to the asylum seekers or in reference to folks who can help with the current homeless situation, either in City Hall or Heritage Crossing?
I'm referencing York County's website. They have the list where you can sign up for donations and-
Okay. So, yeah, my feedback then would be more specific for the municipality. I would ask that we use our communications director, who is awesome, at helping to pump information out directly into our community about both the asylum seekers and the organizations in which are working towards supporting those families during the transition, as well as our current homeless population. And as we gain a greater understanding of the various subcategories within that, for example, our elderly homeless, are there specific ways if someone is passionate about servicing our elderly homeless, is there an organization that they can reach out to, to assist those folks if they're passionate about addiction, homelessness? Are there organizations that they can reach out to, to assist those folks? Because I echo the sentiment as someone who has been helping with the transition of asylum-seeking families in, into long-term housing. It is egregious, the amount of help we get outside of organizations, that creates an incredible amount of headaches for the small resource of people who are working on the ground. And I could see that being the case for our, our other homeless population. So, I'm just requesting that as we move forward in this work, we give more transparency to the community at large via the communication outlets that we already have standing up. A press release would be great, addressing our homeless population, the uptick, the current census, any data that can be shared from our mental health unit. I think that knowledge is power in this situation. You know, I just have to like put a plug in there that like, you know, I, I can't get behind the previous comments from Main Access about shovels not being in hand because he doesn't live here. And there are many, many people who have shovels in their hands. And those folks who spoke tonight are a part of the community who have shovels in their hands. So, my request tonight is just greater transparency and communication from the council, from the City Manager's office, and share information with the community so that it's not two, four, six, eight people working on solutions. Because I do believe there are people in this community who can contribute to solutions and the work so that we can move forward. Thank you.
Okay, so while I gave Jen grief that she should have signed up because she knows better, is there anybody else in the audience who would like to say something, anything to share with us? Okay, seeing none. As far as the homeless and the needle exchange, again, public safety, I highly suspect this will be on their agenda for, am I going to say August 8th? This would be correct, yes. August 8th, 11:00 AM, Zoom, it's available online. To find the Zoom link to that meeting, I encourage you to attend. Anne, I'm assuming this will be on your agenda. Anne chairs the Public Safety Subcommittee, so, and she's passionate about this issue as well. So, please attend, it does help to have that outsider information. I've learned a lot this evening about what you've been dealing with. I, I find one needle on my property and I'm not happy, but I, yes, I see what you're dealing with, and I would be furious, especially for my tenants. I would be furious. Thank you for coming this evening. Okay, we have a relatively long agenda. We'll start with some public hearings. The City Council will take public comment on the following, 23-276-01, "A public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the new application submitted by RL2 LLC for an adult-use retail cannabis store license at 72 Emory Street, Unit 105, Sanford, Maine." I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody to speak in favor or make comments? Jamie, do you have anything on the inspections? You can nod no if you want. You're good, okay. I'm assuming you may be the owner. You may come up and introduce, is this the one retail shop that would go into the mill? Yeah, okay. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brendan Riley. I'm a resident of York. Me and my great uncle and a good friend of mine, and his friend are actually four equal share partners on this venture. I own a medical facility as well in Berwick, and I'm actually trying to move that to Sanford as well. I had a great time working with Jamie and Alex, they've been really good with us.
They are fun, aren't they?
They are. They made it easy. And I look forward to doing business in Sanford.
Wonderful.
And if you guys ever need anything, I'm happy to comply. I mean, that's really it.
Okay. Thank you. And do you want to give us an idea of where in that monster-sized building you're going to be?
Yes. We're in Unit 105, it's the main floor. If you ever are in the parking lot, we did a nice door with a matching brick around the, the door with our own entryway with concrete steps. We really tried to do a good job over there. And Isaac, the owner, one of the owners of the building, has been really helpful. And he appreciates that we put the time and effort there, as a hope for a trend, I guess. So, we're happy to be there. Everyone I've met there has been really nice.
Yes.
So.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. It's actually great that you came to speak this evening, because it's nice to meet the owner.
Yeah, get a face to the company, I figured it'd be nice. So, no, I'm happy to be here. That was all very interesting too, so, you know, it's nice to learn.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Welcome to Sanford.
I believe he's on the consent agenda. Okay, so, is there anybody to speak for or against? Any more commentary from the public? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Are there any objections to this evening's consent agenda? We have this on our consent agenda, and we have above and beyond the adjustment of their Partners Bank night.
Can I object to all the rain that's causing these rescheduled games?
I have no idea. So, Partners, so you must know that Partners Bank typically rains out their night. They, this is their, going to be their third attempt, I believe. So, I'm going to say my prayers for them, because they do have a good time at the Mayors. Okay, I'll declare the consent agenda passed. Old Business, 22-505-01, "Order to extend the continuation of the dangerous building hearing regarding 11 Kimball Street to exhaust enforcement and administrative remedies and process until September 19, 2023." Could I have a motion? Counsel Trish Montague?
Yes, I motion to-
Could I have a second? Counsel Martell?
I'll second that.
Okay, are there any questions? This is continuing to work through the process. Seeing none, all those in favor? Six to zero. 23-282-01, "Order to ratify amendments to the lease agreement with the Thomas W. Cole Post Number 19, American Legion, for city-owned property located at 656 Main Street, Springvale. Map and number, and lot numbers, L21-12A and K21-31A, and to authorize the city manager to renew the lease agreement." Could I have a motion? Counsel Martell?
Motion to accept.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Counsel Trish Montague, seconds. City Manager Buck, do you want to give us a little synopsis of the lease agreement?
Yeah, so, a little, little, if anything, will change. The, the city was gifted the building in 1956 under the provisions that it would continuously be allowed to be utilized by the post, by the Thomas W. Cole Post, for as long as they so peacefully enjoy it. But at this juncture in time, they're proposing to do significant improvements there, install an elevator and other elements. The city still insures the building. So, our insurance carrier said, "Hmm, your lease is old, it's dated, it's, needs to be addressed." So, we engaged our legal counsel, they engaged their legal counsel. There's been a significant amount of work on this. I'm very pleased with the resulting lease. It is for a 50-year request for terms, which I have no issue with, because again, it can only be used for that purpose. And if it's not used for that purpose, it resigns back to the heirs. So, I have no term with the, with the issue. The post wanted a couple of other strengthening of language in there around their ability to rent out for events, as they always have and continue, will continue to do. I didn't see it necessary, but it was a minor thing to, to acquiesce to, to have that in there for redundancy and such and to that. But, so our attorney has signed off as far as the review. Their attorney has done the same. So, I would recommend that you authorize the lease. And that will get us to a point that they can then, they're, they'll be content to apply for their construction permits, and we'll assist with that as, as well, so.
Wonderful. Well, we'll see some renovations. I believe an elevator is in the works as well.
Yes.
Yeah, that'll be good there. I agree. Is there, well, they're already been aging, but it'll, it'll be helpful. So, do we have any questions of the city manager for the lease? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. New, oh no, Old Business, 23-217-01, "Order to make appointments with Sanford Springvale Development Corporation Board." I will read off, we worked at this, at the, Nate, the mayor and I worked on thinking up names with Larissa, and we have come up with the following, who have all said yes. First, we, as we all know, Nate is going to be our City Sanford Council Resident Appointee on that committee. Steve Buck, the city manager, Ronnie Champlin, the Finance Director, Keith McBride, the Executive Director of the Growth Council, Brady Lloyd, the Director of Parks and Recreation, who, I don't know why, but- Brady Lloyd, the director of Parks and Recreation, who, I don't know why, but yes, works out. Leslie Morissette, Graham Tastic's connection, she is a tenant in the building. Brian Samia from Century 21 Northeast has said yes. Our former mayor, Tom Cody, who works for Vishay and is a resident, said yes. Mary Frances Frank, a resident, has said yes. And Andrea Pass, Pass? Paish, who is the executive director for the Sanford Mayors, has said yes. So we tried to get a wide range of people who non, who work for nonprofits or in the building, some of the staff who is well-connected with the work that the Anderson Learning Center does and getting businesses, et cetera. So, if there are any comments, questions, other than that, I'll adjutate a motion. Looks good. Could I have a motion, Counsel Hanselman?
Madam Deputy Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointments to the SSDC.
Thank you, could I have a second? Counsel Martel?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counsel Martel. All those in favor? There we go, six to zero. New Business, the only comment I'm going to make on the new business is we're going to move the agenda item regarding the Central Park benches to before Seven Mill Street because it got stuck between the hearing for Seven Mill Street and the actual action item for Seven Mill Street. So we're going to take it before those two, so we can combine them and we can allow people who are here for that item to move on with their evening. Twenty-three dash two nine zero dash zero one. Order to approve road closure as presented for the National Night Out on August 8th, 2023. Oh, after all our Subcommittee meetings.
Good evening.
Yeah, we get to go to the National Night Out. Good evening.
Eric Small, Deputy Police Chief. Tonight, we're requesting the road closure of School Street between Washington and Bodwell for our annual National Night Out. And just so the public knows, it's a public event that the police department puts on to develop relationships with the community, where we offer a barbecue and other fun things like a dunk tank. Anybody that would like to volunteer, you can certainly sign up with me. But it's a good time, we've done this for many years, as you know. And we'd just like to close down School Street to just offer a little more room in the area. We have fire trucks or other big vehicles and do a touch truck or something like that, so.
So you've never considered doing Washington from Maine to school, like, so it's like that whole?
Washington from Maine, no.
How is the traffic coming by the edge of that, the Central Park?
The road is closed on School Street from Washington to Bodwell, so there's no traffic, just can't go down there.
I think I'd close it, that little, not Main Street, just from Main, like, just that short section of Washington Street so they can't come off of Main Street zipping by what you're doing, that's all?
Oh, yeah, we put, we put a police car across the road there, yeah.
Okay, all right, that was my big question, because I always thought, why don't they just close that little section as well?
Yeah, it's really safe.
Okay, okay, so could I have a motion for the road closure for August 8th?
I probably should tell you what time, sorry, I didn't mention that, from 5:00 to 8:00.
5:00 to 8:00, thank you for the, so from 5:00 to 8:00 on August 8th, 2023, could I have a motion?
Motion to accept the road closure.
Thank you, Counsel Martel. Counsel Hitchcock?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Was this, was that hands for the dunk tank?
I've seen the water in that dunk tank, no.
You know, the mayor's not here.
I know, I've been in the water.
Is the water heated in the dunk tank?
Not heated.
Work on that, and I'll get in there, I don't want to get cold.
It'd be worse for bacteria growth.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate the mayor for the dunk tank.
I second that.
I believe, I believe where she was, at the library where she was getting her internet connection has closed, so I believe that is a wise idea, yeah, so Mayor Brink will be there.
If you do decide you will be the first city councillor to be in the dunk tank, so.
What?
Has not happened yet, no city councillor's ever been in the dunk tank, it's usually the chief or I or officers. So do you want to be the first?
I'd be awfully popular, so no.
Anne and I'll do it.
You're in?
Yeah, we'll do it.
Okay, I'll be there to toss a ball. For Pete, not for Anne, I would never do that to Anne.
We already got soaked in the rain on that, was that awesome?
I hope everybody comes down, it really is fun, it's free food, everybody loves it.
Yeah, they do. Wonderful, okay, thank you. I don't usually lose my place. Twenty-three dash three one zero dash zero one. Order to approve a request for the MDOT overlimit permit for construction on a project pursuant to 29A MRS Section 23827, subsection seven, I should say, and to authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the City Council. Do I have a motion? And then we'll hear from the? Counsel Trasmatin?
Move this forward.
Motion, second. Counsel Hanselman?
I'll second that.
City Manager Buck?
Yes, these are very positive when these come forward because that means the main property transportation is getting ready to do something in our community. So this is for the School Street and Route 4 intersection, which has been a problematic intersection in our community for a very long period of time. So they're coming in to address that, they'll take out some of the grade change that is there and work to install an actual stoplight. So no more experimental light that mostly doesn't work and, yeah, yeah. So it's addressing the major issues there. So with this, they've attached the title to this, but basically what it amounts to is when the contractors come in to mobilize here, the non-divisible loads, like the large paving apparatus, maybe a large backhoe excavator or something of that nature that can't be split up into loads, needs to be transported here to the site. Then you can require that the contractor, the GC, post a bond on that. I've never found that to be needed because they have to post a bond for the project work anyways. So the well-financed operators, if they should damage a local road, not a state road, but a local road in that transport procedure, you as the municipal office, officers have the ability to assign what those damages are to perfect the repairs. So, that being said, I request that you authorize this, to move this forward. It does not apply to like when they're hauling materials there, asphalt, gravel or anything. They still have to be within MDOT specifications for that. Again, this is the mobilization of the large equipment to come to the job site and demobilize. Thank you.
Counsel Martel?
Just a quick question, are we limiting the roadways that they would be able to do that on?
No, as it states here in the communications, it's non, it's non-specific as to what roadways they will, they will actually use. My experience dictates that historically, they'll come across state roads to get here. It's on a state road, they'll come across the state roads to bring that large equipment in. It's easiest, easiest means of moving that and transporting that equipment in here. So I wouldn't anticipate any impacts to our local roads.
Okay, so you don't really expect them to be driving these through, through town? I just have concerns about some, like the bridge over Number One Pond or something like that. But if you think it'd be just coming through Route 4 and the state roads?
I wouldn't have a concern with the bridge over Number One Pond, but that's a state road as well.
Okay.
It's in the compact zones, we're shared responsibility, but should they damage the bridge, that's the state's.
Okay, thank you.
They'll probably turn in Alfred, I would suspect. Okay, so we've had the explanation, we had a motion and second, any other questions? All those in favor? Thank you very much. Twenty-three dash three one one dash zero one. Order to review and accept the proposed slate of officers as put forward for the 2023 Maine Municipal Association Executive Committee. From what I can tell, that would be the vice president for one year, Melissa Dunn, the town manager in the town of Bradley. The executive committee, the new members for three-year terms, Shiloh Lafranier, town manager of the town of Jay, Nathaniel Rudy, the town manager of the town of Gray, and Deana Walker, the select person for the town of Weld. Could I have a motion? Counsel Hanselman?
So moved.
Second, Counsel Trasmatin?
I second.
Thank you. Are there any questions, does anybody know any of these people? Except Steve?
I don't recognize any of the names.
Yes, I know everybody other than the select person from the town of Weld, so, I know everybody else on the list. So, they had a, they had a very hard time this year soliciting this pool of candidates for whatever reason. And there were no, nobody went through the petition process to put a name in, you know, after the fact and such and to that. So the slate of officers is, is this, is uncontested. So I would, I would ask for your support to pass this. That ballot will then go in, we have to have it back to them by August 18th, easily done. And that would complete your responsibilities as far as the election of officers for our municipal association.
Okay. So, since we don't know them, they seem to want to do the job, all those in favor? Thank you, six to zero. Excellent, okay, the moved item, twenty-three dash two seven four dash zero one. Order to approve purchase of five center armrests for Central Park benches in the amount of ten, $1,020. And since the Subcommittee has chosen to make no recommendation, I'll entertain a motion to discuss. Counsel Hanselman?
I would make a motion to discuss.
Counsel Trasmatin, or Counsel Stackfull?
I wasn't looking. You can have it, it's all right.
Well, you haven't been doing anything this evening, go ahead.
Second.
Counsel Stackfull, seconds. Okay, so let's discuss. Yes, Counsel Trasmatin?
So I talked to DC Small on his opinion on the, the armrests at the five benches, I believe there's five, right? And this would help him, and as a police officer, people not laying down, they could see this. If they're on the ground, they can, they can go by and see, but in the benches, everybody can see. And they really need to clean that up, so I'm, I'm in, I wasn't in favor of it, but I am. And so I, I think this is something, unfortunately, we got to spend $1,000. But at Central Park in New York City, it's my favorite city, and they have the exact same things that Steve wants to put in. And their homeless is pretty, pretty crazy. And it's working fine, there's no issues, this is a good thing, so I just wanted to speak and say that.
I appreciate that. So I'm going to probably go to each councillor, make a comment, we'll take a vote. This is kind of a really personal decision and I don't think this is something necessarily worth arguing. We can just, we could all state our case and then we can move through. So Counsel Hitchcock, if you are ready and able.
Okay. I know there have been discussions, I actually was observing the Property Subcommittee meeting when this was brought up and I believe it was my colleague Counselor Hanselman that mentioned that this is probably something that, you know, isn't going to solve the problem overall. And I do, I do agree with that statement, that, you know, if they're not on the bench, they're just going to be on the ground. It's not going to solve the issue of, you know, the presence that my colleague here brought up, Counsel Trasmatin, about how visible it is. That being said, I do think that, you know, there has to be some steps. The whole concept of the homelessness issue in our community, the whole concept of, it's a very convoluted issue and it's something that's not going to be solved from just a city perspective. It's going to be solved from a, you know, county perspective, from a state perspective, and maybe even a federal perspective. And I, I don't mean to pontificate over something on something as much as a $1,000 request for benches here, but ultimately, I think in the grand scheme of everything that we have to do as a city councillor for every single person here, I do think that, you know, the small step, this is a small step that we can do. So I think I would ultimately be in favor of this. I'm happy to hear my other councillors as we go along, but that's where I stand currently.
Thank you, Counsel Hitchcock. Counsel Martel?
Okay, so this is, this is the first, first time I've heard about this today, so, a little bit of a surprise, but. So I know other cities have done this, and to me, it's, I understand the approach, but it, it kind of feels like just masking a problem by making people sleep on the ground or forcing them to another area. So I would prefer to put effort towards solving the problem than what kind of feels like masking it. So I think I'm going to not support this at this time. I may be swayed in another direction with some more information, but I think not allowing people to take a nap at the, in the park for a little while or enjoy the sun. Not everybody that enjoys the park benches is, is homeless and just sort of loitering, so. I'd like to leave that option open for people, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Hanselman?
Thank you, and as I mentioned at Property Subcommittee where this was discussed, I'm not in favor of installing arms in the park benches. It's not a budgetary issue, it's a nominal expense. For me, it's about the fact that we're simply, it's, to me, ineffectual approach to a really large problem. And I heard Steve, and I respected Steve's comment, that it's one small, I think the mayor had made the comment as well, it's one small kind of step or part of the process. To me, $1,000 could be put to better use in other efforts perhaps. And I think putting armrests in seems further demoralizing to a group of folks that I don't think we necessarily would take in good care of, and that feels bad to me as a fellow human being. As a downtown business owner, I see folks day in and day out, oftentimes they're sitting there, so I don't think it's going to change their presence in our park. And I'm not necessarily sure, you know, that that even needs to happen frankly. So anyway, I'm against them, I didn't say that well perhaps, but, excuse me, I continue to be against the installation of arms.
Thank you, Counsel Hanselman. Counsel Stackfull?
Yeah, I, I think that the problems that have arisen in our community are multifaceted and will take multifaceted solutions. And so I support this as it can hopefully be something that's part of, part of the solution. So anyways, I would intend to vote for it.
So first of all, Brady, thank you for your hard work in getting the information. I'm not sure, you know, I'm kind of counting votes a little bit, and I'm not sure this is going to go anywhere this evening until the mayor has returned. And I did forewarn her, we might end up at a 3-3 and she might have to, you know, we might have this come back on the agenda and have a further conversation. I had a conversation with a friend of mine and kind of got my ear chewed out because I was, I was kind of on the fence, I've seen the negative because as I told everybody, I have a city bench, a very heavy cast iron city bench sitting in my commercial mall because I found someone sleeping on the bench in front of my businesses. Probably back in the 80s, so it wasn't me actually, I was in college, my mother found it. But it became a problem for us as business owners and so, you know, that you, that tends to think you, I'd sway one particular direction and, you know, he gave me, you know, we just had a nice conversation about it, where I did get my ear chewed out. And then I started to look online and believe it or not, they call this hostile architecture, is what they call this. And there's, so I'm not saying that there isn't some potential benefit in certain aspects of our community to make sure our benches are divided, but I'm not sure that's in our public park. And I do think it's a bigger, the homelessness issue is a bigger problem. And I don't think dividers on a bench are going to solve it. I think it's just going to be a slap in the face to people who are really struggling right now. So I intend to vote not in favor this evening. So if we do end up 3-3, that is okay. I would ask that we hopefully take that matter up again when the mayor is here. So, Brady or Mr. Buck, would you like to say anything before we vote? I knew this, this is pretty political, you shouldn't feel at all like bad, it's just a very political topic, so. Counsel, City Manager Buck?
Yeah, so I asked Director Brady Lloyd to get a quote on these, the installation of the arms. But first, you know, do nothing with that until it came to the City Council because I anticipated the sensitivity of the topic. So park benches are historically placed for several reasons. One is, you know, so you can sit in the park, peacefully enjoy the park, observe the park and such and to that. In a well-laid-out community, you'll have benches every so many feet for rest areas for individuals that need to stop along their route, sit down, pause for time, get back up and continue on their route. So that's, that's part of that design. The observation has been, only since the Career Center, Career Center, the Counseling Center closed and a group of individuals now gathers into the park and that's become their daytime inhabitants, there's a population that sleeps on the benches with their backpacks and such and to that, consumes the bench for the entire day, is sprawled out and sleeping. So it, it's not, no longer a shared resource, it's utilized by that singular individual. So the arms are, I guess, it's hostile architecture, but the arms are designed for, to discourage that placement. All benches that the city has placed newly, such as Gateway Park and others, they, all the benches have the arms in them, in that center, center position. So I just lend that as part of the conversation, that's why this topic came forward as part of that mechanism of addressing some of those situations as to whether it's an abuse of that property, not for the intended use or such and to that. That's why this was brought forward for consideration, thank you.
Thank you, Brady, would you like to add anything this evening? Because you've done all the hard work.
No, thank you guys, I think you covered it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll take a vote, if it ends up being 3-3, we will bring it back. We, we do need a motion to vote. So you can motion in either direction based on your feelings. Counsel Stackfull?
I will move, we approve, trying to find it on the.
The bench, the bench armrests?
Right. Move, we approve the purchase of the bench armrest for Central Park.
Counsel Trasmatin?
I second to have the armrest put in Central Park.
Okay, so all those in favor? All those opposed? It's not necessarily a bad thing, guys. Okay, so you have the information. Okay, so you have the information, and Steve, I'll let you continue this in property, and, you know, if it fails, we should come back, as we're dealing with the homeless situation, we can bring it back.
No pressure on the mayor.
I already know the way she feels, so.
Would it be possible to have our DC Small, or Chief Anderson, or somebody from the mental health unit, to speak to us about their, I respect their and appreciate their opinion on this?
That's probably a great idea, so, okay.
Yeah, you want?
Yes, Counselor Trasmontaigne?
That's one of the reasons I called DC Small to get his opinion on this. Yes, I would love to have him come in and educate us.
Counselor Trasmontaigne and I actually spoke about this at lunch yesterday, and I said, "You go your way," and I'm glad he got some information from an opposing point of view, so I think that's excellent, so, okay. So it's, you know, I hate to have massive arguments on stuff like this. It's a sensitive issue. Okay, is everybody ready for the next part of our evening? Okay. Good evening, Mr. Housiel, your turn.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Twenty-three, dash two-nine-eight, dash zero-one. This is a hearing to determine whether Seven Mill Street identified as tax map K-15 Lot Six and K-15 Lot Twelve, and further described in a deed recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds at Book seventeen-nine-three-nine, page five-oh-five, and mortgage recorded at Book seventeen-nine-three-nine, page five-zero-seven, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of seventeen MRSA Sections two-eight-five-one to two-eight-five-nine, and to determine what, if any, remedy is appropriate. I will declare the public hearing open. Mr. Housiel, would you start the discussion?
Thank you. Ben, would you mind switching over to the podium screen, so I can control it from here?
We can switch to the monitor.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to start with Seven Mill Street tonight, we have three of these to do. Seven Mill Street's the most complicated, it's a, it's a five-unit building, and at this point, it appears to be empty, at least legally. The owner is Seven Mill Street LLC, they are based out of Comac, New York. There's two properties involved, both a budding, and this is a copy of the deed, and there's also a mortgage on this from Partners Bank. Here's a copy of the notice of hearing, as recorded in the Registry of Deeds. The parties have all been contacted by main civil procedure. Partners Bank, I've been in contact with Partners Bank, they're aware of the hearing tonight, and we've discussed this, I have not had any communication from either the registered agent or the property tax payer. These are copies of the receipt by certified mail to the banks and to the owner, and this was also advertised in the Sanford's, excuse me, in the Reporter, the local paper, for three successive weeks. Aaron Letterer, our code enforcement officer, who I'll ask some questions of a clarification, has been helping with this property. He has, he has provided city correspondents dating back from 2019 in your packets, a notice of violation for failure to license, 2019 rental inspection, notice of violation. He also provided that in color. I'm going to just go down to some of his pictures here, because they're very illustrative. I think I just, sorry, I just skipped over to the 2023 January twenty-third notice of violation in color, so this is the time that some of these units were occupied, missing outlet covers. The primary concern at the time was the way that the property was being used by tenants and visitors. There's one picture on the right showing water damage, the one on the left is showing a Sharps container, but a variety of needles around, and also the issues emanating from a trailer placed on the property, or allowed to be placed on the property, and not managed by the owner. This is the same notice of violation, but, and ordered to vacate on January twenty-third, twenty-two thousand and three. And then I also provided emails back from March, so at the time, there are a couple parties, Samuel Sherry is the registered agent, James Cala Tissis is, seems to be someone involved with the LLC, and then also John Kent is also involved with the LLC. At the time, I was in communication with Samuel Sherry, asking them to have the trailer removed, and on April twenty-sixth, he writes, "Mr. Housiel, the trailer's been removed, and the yard has been cleaned up, can we proceed with renting the units?" That was rather concerning, and I'll explain as we go along, and advice that they can get the trailer pulled as of that date. I had followed up with the police department at the time, they'd shared with me a writ of possession they had, and they alleged that the police department had failed to act to evict on their behalf. The police department reviewed the writ of possession with the district attorney, and found they had no authority whatsoever to evict from the trailer, the trailer on the property, per the writ. Seven Mill Street, Unit B, Ann Freeman, and all other occupants, there's no mention of a trailer. And then, as I stated, from my perspective, it remains a mystery as to who this trailer belongs to on your property, and why this condition persists. There's substantial amount of trash in your rear yard, you continue to remain in violation of city code. And then, in just last week, Aaron has been in communication with the property owner, writing to them, "Good morning, John, it would be best to wait until the sprinkler system was complete, and all fire safety features are completed before the inspection." He doesn't see any permits being pulled for work done, plumbing, electrical, for a new heating system. He's included the notice of violation, which need to be addressed, that have not been completed, these are past due and should be completed prior to another inspection. These items have been corrected, they were done without permits, and after the facts, permits would be required. John Kent writes to Aaron, "I need your help, I've been working away at Mill Street to make the property inhabitable. We've removed all the squatters and drug users, cleaned up the entire building and lot, installed a new heating system, cleaned and repaired every unit, and much more." He's had a difficult time getting a sprinkler company to look at the sprinkler system, but the company that installed the sprinkler system, Total Climate and Control, ran a sprinkler test and reported the system is working at seventy PSI. Aaron, our bank, Partners Bank, has put us in default for not having a habitable building, they intend to, on foreclosing on us, unless I can get the city to allow me to sign leases and move tenants in. I'm asking you to help me get this property permits to go forward, we're ready for you to inspect the property anytime, I just need your help with this. Feel free to call me or respond to this email." So Aaron was prompt in that response. I did want to raise, now I'll get into the utility information, so this thirty-day lien notice was received, I have, I have, I had this copied on Thursday of last week, and it had not been paid at that time. There's seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and four cents in arrears on this property, a full year of property tax payments that have not been paid. And here's the utility report that I provide, mentioning the property taxes, the water's on, the sewer is in arrears since April with two-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents owing, the electrical service is not disconnected, the communications service you'll see is stuffed in a mailbox, and the property is posted against occupancy until repaired. This, this, this property goes on for, I'm just going to just work on hitting this three times, just to get this straight, but four pages of police calls dating back since 2019, vandalism, multiple disturbances, multiple, I'm looking for, multiple trespasses, truancy, disturbances, burglaries, other suspicious activity, continued trespasses, burglaries, trespassing. That's a long list, I'd say that that's the longest list of police calls that we've had in these dangerous building hearings. I'm going to shift over to the photographs, so you can see, this is on Mill Street, represents these two properties. This is a property, this is a picture from the front, it's just showing some of the electrical connections, you can see the communication line wrapped around lighting, and then stuffed in the mailbox, the other mailbox hangs askew. Let's see, I'm going to get that to work. These are the stairs that you could see in that last picture, just recounting that letter from seven-ten, these photos were all taken last week on Tuesday afternoon. So that, having trouble moving it through, so these stair stringers are all broken out, busted, this is a dangerous set of stairs to walk up, this is the unit that it accesses, the electricity's on, but this unit is empty, it could be occupied, it's unclear whether it is. There's a picture of the electrical meters, all on here, and active. There's a, there's a sink top sitting, sitting next to the, to the oil tank here. Other pictures from around the building, you can see that some of the windows are open, other windows are broken. This is a unit, you could see the exposed insulation here, missing ceiling tile, drips and water damage, the floor looks wet. Just other pictures of other units, general trash piled up in other ones, it could be swept up, but there's generally just trash in some of these units, in some sort of piled-up way. On the day that I was there, there was a vehicle parked in the back of the building, it is registered, and on a property that's vacant. There's couch, pile of mattresses, tarp material, here's a picture of the mattresses, different stuff under the tarps. These are the, these are the rear stairs, these are not structurally sound, they're held up on just footings that are not attached to the ground, with no lateral support, and these need to be, need proper footings and proper, proper support. You can see some of the notices placed on the side of the building, these, these footings are also deteriorated, that's, that footing is, excuse me, I'm shifting around, is crumbling. Here are some of the other pictures of these deck systems out, so these all represent either primary egress, or secondary egress from this building. Other pictures of other units, missing tiles, variety of water damage, wires hanging down, open boxes, not in a move-in-ready state. Some of these units have other lights on, you could see mattresses piled up, gasoline cans, this is up on the top floor, same picture, same place of mattresses, different household In this picture, you can see that the roof is, along the soffit, has caved in some, that might be where some of the water damage in the pictures from the middle of the winter are coming. The ridge is pulled away, water can easily get inside this building. Just for a note, this was a historic building in the past of a shoe factory. These are where some of the broken windows are, these windows are also open. In this case, it appears as if we've got a wire coming from Unit B to Unit A, and that wire is holding the door shut for Unit A. And then, Unit C seems, has all blacked-out windows, as if someone is living there that isn't supposed to be. I wanted to point out that, again, five dwellings, it was ordered vacated after January twenty-third, twenty-three. It's unsecure, it lacks adequate maintenance, we've got windows and doors unlocked, broken or open, there's reports of illegal activity being committed on the property, made to local law enforcement agencies, I mentioned the interior lights on during the day, and uninhabitable units, windows being blacked out in other units. There's also a white pickup truck that also is there sometimes, and sometimes not, vehicles come and go from the property, indicating lack of management and illegal uses of the uninhabitable property. So the lack of security and inadequate maintenance, so it's not being maintained, this constitutes a hazard to health and safety, is dangerous to life and property. I also wanted to point out that, that the property indicates that it's abandoned, and we define abandoned in three different ways now. One, we define it in our local code, under, under the vacant building license, that's chapter one forty-nine, Article six point three, we defined abandoned there. It's also defined under thirty-A MSR, MRS, Section three, three thousand one hundred and six-B, which is the abandonment, and then also the new land bank law under Section fifty-one fifty-seven, which talks about a totality of the evidence. There's a lot of different ways, and these are the criteria, so they're, the code enforcement officer has ordered the property vacated, and prohibited from occupancy, and has made a determination that the property is unfit for occupancy, windows and doors are continuously left unlocked or broken, rubbish and trash and debris is accumulated on the property, furnishings and personal property are absent from the property, and any remaining personal property is damaged or unusable. The building and improvements on the property, including the roof footings, access and egress, decks and stairs that are deteriorating and dilapidated, so as to constitute a threat to public health and safety. And then reports of trespassers and other legal lax being committed on the property have been made to local law enforcement agencies. So those are all criteria of abandonment, there are a number. And then I also want to point it out, as I have, the couches and mattresses and tarps, and then the egress to the units is unsafe via the stair structures, they're unstable with footings that are improper and deteriorated, and broken stair treads and stringers and railings. I didn't take a picture of it, but there's pooling water as well in the flat roof section, and also the perforated roofing membrane, and the rotting near the soffits, and also the stair, stair structures are rotting and deteriorated and dilapidated. The property lacks adequate maintenance, I think that, I think what we're seeing here is that this property owner is, I think, attempting to manage this property from Newark, and they might be, they, I think with their inadequate maintenance, is showing that they lack oversight. Their email demonstrate that they don't know what's going on at the property, when the conditions at the property are quite different from what they suggest. I think that as well, that the failure to pay property taxes on time is not, or at all at this point, is just showing that they are very unconcerned with this property, and it's in a state where it's being sorely used. Aaron has, I'll call Aaron up to talk a little bit about his, his experience of this property, his inspection from January twenty-third, twenty-three. He saw standing water and leaking water in the basement and first floor, the sprinkler system was malfunctioning at the time, there are extension cords being used as permanent wiring for the camper, the trash and debris all around the unit included drug paraphernalia, there was a lack of water. There was a lack of water service to the building and the units. There are broken windows, and the camper was being used as a dwelling. And at the time, it was an unlicensed rental housing, rental house. If and so I'd like to know a little bit more from Aaron, just on the on this, what it what it's taken to to get that property licensed and if it has been licensed since. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Lederer.
Good evening. So the property was found in the state as Mr. Houseill stated. When we went there, the, I believe, the water had been, they were having issues with the water being shut off. Sprinkler system was not functional. Heating system was not completely functional. Lots of issues trying to get the property licensed with its rental housing license in a timely manner, with multiple bills being sent out and reminders, and and finally notices of violation as well. This property did have a rental inspection back in, I believe, twenty nineteen, with all those items that Mr. Houseill brought out regarding the decks, the lighting, the electrical, standing water, the sanitation, all continuing to be, as you saw in the pictures, in its current state. So nothing has been repaired or fixed or had that adequate maintenance that's been required. Unfortunately, the property is still, as you see in the pictures, this way last week, completely unsecure. We have attempted to communicate with the owner to try to assist where we could in getting contacting the sprinklers companies to make sure that they could have access to the building. So we have tried to work with them, and unfortunately, it's still seven months later in this state that you see it today. Any other conditions? The couches, the debris outside still was there when I inspected it back in January, even though it was covered in snow. But if you guys have any specific questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them regarding the condition of the property.
Councilor Hanselman?
So did they respond to the July tenth email about the after-the-fact permit at all? Or that was the last communication at this point?
No, no response.
Okay, thank you.
We're here.
Councilor Martel?
We're here. The owners of the building are here.
I I know you're here. I'm actually, I was checking with the executive assistant. I'm going to have you speak next. It's like the councils will ask them a couple of questions, and then we'll have you speak. Okay?
Sure.
I I definitely would make sure you, you're going to have the opportunity. Councilor Martel?
Yeah, thank you. So I see the email from July sixth, says where he cleaned, supposedly cleaned up the apartments and done a bunch of repairs. But what you're saying appears to show that not a thing has really happened. Is that those pictures were from last week, and nothing's really changed in in the condition of the apartments?
Correct. So there may have been individual units that had items cleaned out. There was an occupied unit when we went and tagged the building as uninhabitable. They moved out, and I don't know if the needles were cleaned up and that type of debris. I didn't go back into those units yet. I have not been back inside of that building.
Okay.
Since what date?
January twenty-third, I believe.
Okay.
Just I've only been on the exterior.
The pictures through the windows of the, what was the date of those?
I took those pictures last Tuesday afternoon.
Okay, thank you. And how many units are in this building?
Five.
Five? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Director Houseill, do you have anything further you want to add before I have the?
I did drive by yesterday morning and this morning. I didn't really see any appreciable change. I did provide in your packet, there's a draft findings in order there for you. So our typical process is that that that's a one draft. If there are amendments that need to be made to it, you can make that. And then after this hearing, we do a confirmation hearing at the next meeting. So if there's any further changes we need to make, we can do that before we bring it back to the city council. So I can answer more questions, but if you wanted to pass it over to the?
Or to the the property owner and whoever's, I think there's two gentlemen. Okay.
Yes.
So could you just introduce yourself so that we can have it for the record? And then please feel free to share any information with us.
Sure. So we're both owners and managing members.
Your names are?
My name is James Kalaitzis, K-A-L-A-I-T-Z-I-S.
Okay, thank you.
And this is John Kent, K-E-N-T.
Thank you.
And John will do most of the talking, but I just want to start off with the the twenty nineteen notice from October that was sent to us, but it really wasn't sent to us. If you look at the notice which Mr. Houssil had on the screen, it went to suite one hundred. We're we're in a pretty big building, office building. If you look at the second notice they sent in January of this year, it went to the correct address, suite one-ten. The notice that we received in January of this year doesn't have any of the previous violations on it. So we were totally unaware of this until last week, when Mr. Lederer emailed it to us. So I just want to point that out. Number two, well, I'll let you say it.
Thanks. Hello, everyone. As of January of twenty twenty, we had four tenants in the in the building. We had, we got one vacancy. A woman approached us, Annie Freeman, saying she had a city voucher from from Sanford Housing, and she would like to rent the unit. We showed her, allowed her to go in and look at the unit, and she said she was coming back also to measure her curtains. When she came back, she moved into the unit. And after, in the next month, Sanford Housing told us there was no record of her. She didn't have a voucher. It was nothing. So when we contacted her to leave, she claimed she had squatters' rights. So we called the police, and they made she, she detailed to them that she had rights to be there, and it was constant back and forth. So we had, we started a legal action about a year ago, I want to say April. In the meantime, all these drug people started arriving all over the place, and homeless people. Two of our remaining four tenants moved out. They just left. The other two, we moved into other units we have in Sanford. We have four other buildings.
On on Acorn Street and Brook Street.
Yeah, we have two on Acorn Street, two on Brook Street. So we moved in there. There's no one living there now. In the meantime, we have a legal action going. I can't kick them out. I can't do anything to them.
The police won't take any action.
Police won't take any action. I have homeless people breaking into the, all the units, destroying it, creating all that garbage that was detailed, devocating all over the place, people dropping furniture in the place. Then this trailer comes that Annie Freeman gave the right for them to be there, even though they had no right. I couldn't get them out. The police couldn't help me, and they tried. I I have nothing to say against the police. And next thing you know, I had hundreds of needles all over the place. I had homeless people all over my place, destroying my property.
Also, let me interject. Also, they kept breaking into our building and stealing electricity from us, which we got, we have a violation on that also, that there was extension cords used as permanent electricity. Well, we had no say in that. They just broke in, just, when we had our maintenance guy go to the building, he was disconnected, and then they would break in the next day and steal electricity.
Turn it back on.
We never collected rent from them. We have no idea who they were, what their names were. So I just wanted to add that.
There were abandoned cars brought to our property. We had no control over anything. I couldn't do anything. The police couldn't do anything. We finally got the proper order to vacate in April, the first week or so of April, of which we got Annie Freeman out. We have a, we have a custodian who basically spends all his time there, and he's become almost, at that time, became almost like a guard. So we got all the bad people out. We evicted Annie Freeman. She's out. She was represented in court by, I think it's called Tall Trees, who fought us on this while she was in there.
Pine Tree.
Pine Tree, excuse me, who fought us the entire way. We finally got her out. Then we had to get the trailer out, which was a huge hassle. We finally got that, I believe, on April sixteenth. Now, we have four other properties in Sanford, as we detailed. We got Six Acorn, Eight Acorn Street, one oh one Brook Street, and one oh seven Brook Street. Sanford Housing, Aaron Lederer knows our building. I don't consider him a person against me. I I look to him to help me in this at times. While this is going on, I'm calling Adam, telling him about Aaron, telling him about the problem I'm having with these homeless people all over my property. There's nothing I can do, but they know how we run our other properties. So this has been a giant frustration. We got the, we got control of the property. We've changed all the locks. So we've gone about to clean up the property. To my knowledge, there is no furniture, as was detailed, all over the property, the pictures from last week. None of that is there. We have pictures that we could share. So that property, that, all that has been cleaned up. That truck is there, is not there, excuse me. There is no one living in that building. And if there is, we constantly kick them out. Our goal has been, and that's what I have looked to Aaron to help me for, to get the building habitable again. Okay? And I've dealt in the past with Aaron. I've dealt with Jeannie Wood on our other buildings, and they're very picky in what they want, but I don't consider it necessarily a bad thing. When they tell me we have to do things, I do it.
Yeah, but we're trying to do the right thing, and we we are taking it seriously. Maybe not to everyone's liking, but there's only so much we could do in one shot. We just got control of the building three months ago. Since then, we replaced the heating system, spent twenty-five thousand on that. We wouldn't be spending twenty-five thousand dollars if we if we didn't care about the building. We've spent money on legal fees. We've spent money on repairs. Yes, there is more to do, but we're trying to make an effort here in determining that the building is, what's the wording, unsafe or dangerous.
Dangerous and hazardous, yeah.
It's only going to invite these people to go back in, destroy the building. They did a number on it already. And, yeah, you're hurting us, you're hurting the neighbors there, you're hurting everybody. And we are making an effort to move forward. Have we stumbled along the way? Yes, we have. Did we know about the twenty nineteen violations? No, we never got it till, I think, a week ago, Monday. So.
We've gone out, we have AAA fire goes through all of our properties and puts in fire extinguishers, puts in smoke detectors. I sent them there for this. They wouldn't go in because they said there was a condemnation sign. Same thing happened with the sprinkler company. I couldn't get them to go. I asked Aaron to help me and put aside a, that wasn't condemned. It just wasn't habitable, and he did it. And I thanked him.
Oh, he emailed them, which?
Yeah, and he contacted them.
Yeah.
They went through our building on Monday. Yeah, we have a sprinkler system. We're going to get a proposal this week on any work fees we've done to it, and they'll give a certification, which we'll provide to the city. I have no problem with that. In terms of pile of junk and different things in the different units, that is, will be soon, or many of it is already removed. Okay, we are going to clean up. Problem we had, as we detailed before, we would make these improvements, they'd come in, they'd break in, do bad things on our units, and we'd have to go out, change the locks, which we've done numerous times, and clean up the place. We appear to have control of the place now. We do have control. We have basically a full-time custodian taking care of the place. We are going to get this thing up and running. I am going to make all the repairs.
And trust me, we're spending a ton of money on him cleaning up the property, getting rid of all the needles. It's, there's been a big improvement, huge improvement from six months ago, seven months ago. Yes, there is more work to do.
When I reach out to Aaron Lederer, I don't reach out as, I I really was looking to him to help us, and if he says, okay, John, now you got to go to this or that, we'll do it. He has dealt with me on Six Acorn Street, Eight Acorn Street, one oh one, and one oh seven street. He knows our other buildings. And this has been a problem. And I told Aaron about the homeless issue this past year. He did know about it, and I spoke to him in January. So what, I I know it looks bleak for us. We are going to fix this thing. It is going to be like our other buildings. It will be okay. What we just need is time to get many of these repairs done. That's what we're asking.
And just one last point. I couldn't see the list very well of all the police calls, but I believe most of it has been since January twenty twenty-two, when Annie Freeman moved in. Because all sorts of people were coming by the building, staying on the property without our permission, partying late into the night, loud music, people passing out all over the place. It was a real mess. But but things are turning around, and we we just need some patience, some, just some patience and some time to keep fixing it. Trust me, we're we're taking a pick boss on this, and we we need to get renters in there. We need tenants, because obviously, if you don't have tenants, you're not making any money.
Yeah. The other thing we're not going to do, we won't rent a unit unless Aaron gives us the green light. Okay? So I would never do that. There is no one living in there now. And we put a tenant, two left, one of our tenants is, one is in one oh one Brook Street that was there, the other one is in Six Acorn Street. There is no one living there that was a tenant or paying us rent.
Thank you, gentlemen. So, okay. Aaron, quick question for you.
You're welcome to ask them any questions that you might have to.
Yeah, I will. I will. So Aaron, the other properties were, like, it sounds like there's some, I'm a little concerned about notification issues and conversation issues, and also just wanted to you to comment on their other properties, and if, you know, there's?
So we've done rental inspections on all those other properties. Six Acorn, I believe, was Jeannie Wood. I think she came, she handled that one, and then I did Eight Acorn and the ones on Brook Street.
So responsive to any requests?
Yep, so they've been responsive to the notices of violation. There's the one, all of them, they got sent to the same address. I believe that the suite address was just updated recently from the one hundred to the one-ten, when we were told that that was incorrect. I don't know the date when that was corrected, but all the other notices about violations were sent to the same address, the one hun, suite one hundred. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, no more. I guess I'm like, I'm concerned that they haven't known that there was such a list, even though they've been working with you, it sounds like.
So they were working based off of the notice of violation from January?
Correct.
And they didn't realize that there was an older violation notice from a rental inspection we did with their property manager back in twenty nineteen, where a notice of violation was sent after that rental inspection?
Okay.
Which pointed out the deck and the lighting and the?
So, yeah, which is about the time that they purchased it? What year did you purchase it, gentlemen?
The end of April twenty nineteen.
Was it before or after that notice went out? Do you know?
The notice went, is dated October thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Okay, so after, okay. Councilor Hanselman?
Well, and just for a point of clarification, the October thirtieth, twenty nineteen notice has at the top left corner via email. As a procedure, are we getting signed certifications back or read receipts or any kind of tracking to know if that was actually received?
Um, let me see.
Or if it would be here if we had that?
Yeah.
Because I, too, am just concerned about this statement that they weren't aware of this NOV.
Yeah, so we do require them to sign. I don't know, I don't have the the certification receipt on me right now to say if they signed it or not.
If we had that, would it be in this packet? Or not necessarily?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
I guess I'm sitting here concerned that you seem to have a responsive property owner so, as far as getting stuff done. It seems responsive, but I don't know what your actual experience has been.
So for Eight Acorn, they are responsive for that property. For this property, we haven't gotten any, hardly any responses based from the notice of violation.
Is it, can you gentlemen respond to, you know, it seems like with one property, very responsive, this property, is it because of the Annie Freeman situation?
When I got the notice from Aaron in January, this is John Kent, I called Aaron, and I told Aaron the whole issue I've been dealing with. I called Aaron and I told Aaron the whole issue I've been dealing with. And I did respond to him right away. At that time, my hands were completely tied. I couldn't go in and get Freeman out there. I had no control. My property was littered with drug needles, all these freaking homeless people. Pops couldn't help me as much as they tried. And I'm not making, doing, saying anything against them. It was only until April 16th.
April 14th.
April 14th, when I got control of my property again. And then we went in and kicked people out. The police helped us. Then I had control. I couldn't even get rid of the damn trailer. It, I had to wait till April 19th. About the same time, we had the trailer taken away that we had to pay for. Um, that was full of druggies and squatters and what have you. On none of our properties do we have druggies or squatters. Oh, the only reason I allowed Annie Freeman in to pull, look at curtains was because she had a voucher from Sanford Housing. And that, so they have checked the tenant out. And I know it's, it's a good rent paying tenant, a quality person.
Yeah, she, she asked us, do you mind if I go in, um, in the meantime? And we were trying to be nice, trying to help her out. We had no idea of her history and obviously it bit us in the rear end. But, um, as far as being responsive, um, from the January 23rd notice of violation, there's, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight items. Um, uh, one was removing the camper. The camper's gone. Uh, disconnecting the extension cord that was being used as permanent wiring. Obviously, that's done. Trash and debris all around the units. Um, after, I believe Aaron sent us pictures last week of, of furniture. By the dumpster, we had that removed. The truck is removed. Um, there's water service to the building. Um, so we've addressed most of these things. Um, so we are being responsive. We are trying. We just haven't been able to get everything. Um, the issues that Mr. Huseel mentioned about the roof and the, um, the deck and we were unaware of. Um, so we have to address that too. But obviously, we can't do everything all in one shot. Um, it has to be part of a plan to fix it over, uh, months.
We've had Sanford Housing.
Depending on the severity of it.
We've had Sanford Housing come in on our other properties, in particular Jeannie Wood. And she'll tell you, okay, I've gone through your property. Here are the 10 things you gotta fix right away. And we fix them. You can ask Jeannie Wood. We do that. And we'll, we have every intention of doing it on this property also.
Yeah, why, why wouldn't we walk away from it in the past?
We'd never walk away. I might, I was just very, very frustrated.
Councilor Stackpole, did you have something?
Uh, yeah, I had a couple of questions. Um, so Ian, the photograph that you showed us tonight with the door tied up, is that last Tuesday when you took that picture also or?
I, I observed it this morning too. It's in the same state.
So the building essentially isn't secure.
That's right. That's, that's the primary concern.
It just has a string holding the, the door. So, I, look, it's, it sounds to me like everybody's putting forth a fairly good effort to try to get this building rehabbed. And, uh, certainly you know of the housing situation that we have here in Sanford. We could use five more apartments, uh, on the market, five more safe apartments, uh, for people. So we certainly want, uh, this building to be, to be rehabbed. Um, I hear what you're saying. Uh, I empathize with, uh, the situation. But then I look at that picture of the door that's not secure. So you, you got $25,000 in a furnace in there that somebody could, I mean, just untie it. They don't have to kick anything. They don't have to break anything and could get in there and, and cause some problems. So, uh, you know, the, the purpose of this, if the council chooses to vote for a continuance on this, is to continue to hold the owners, you guys, uh, feet to the fire to get this done. Uh, it, that's really what it amounts to. Uh, is a, is a process by which we can keep pressure on, um, owners of, of not just apartment houses, houses, um, you know, things that are, that are buildings that are not safe, uh, and get them to fix them up, make them habitable. And I, I'm sure if you went down the road here with the counselors, um, they're in a total agreement with me that we need housing here in Sanford. And we would like you guys to get this fixed up so that, uh, it is, uh, up to code, I guess is the way, but obviously habitable and, and safe. So, um, if we're gonna continue this, I want, I, I'm trying to give you my take on why I would vote to continue this. I appreciate all your efforts, but we need to, obviously, I think, keep the pressure on a little bit. Maybe there isn't, maybe there isn't the best track record for this building, uh, that there could be, but we need to keep the pressure on a little bit. And anything I'm sure that we can do, um, as a community to, to make this work for you. You know, I think everybody is willing to make it, uh, make it work for you. But, uh, so that's my.
Thank you, Councilor.
Five cents worth.
Yeah, and we're fine with pressure. We're, we're okay with pressure. Um, as you may sense, pressure's okay, but we're just very, very frustrated, as you may sense, certainly from me tonight.
It's been a frustrating year and a half. Um, part of it due to the pandemic, part of it due to the eviction laws, part of it due to what the police would or would not be willing to do, part of it due to not being aware of some of the violations. I mean, it's, it's, there's a lot of reasons here, but I think you understand that we're serious about turning it around. Um, and, uh, deeming it a unsafe building doesn't help. We, we need, um, a new game plan from Aaron Letterer with a new list that we could work off of. And we've done it before on Acorn and Brook. Not, not to this degree, but any violations, we addressed. We fixed it and moved forward. And it, it's in everybody's benefit to do that.
Councilor Tranchmontane, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question for the gentleman from New York. Um, one, thank you for coming on. Uh, what I want to know is if you're gonna, you have now all the violations for this building. Obviously, it was damaged by the homeless, and we get that. Um, what is your timeframe? What do, we need the five units. How can we get behind you if we don't understand the timeframe for you to get these violations done so we can have these rented? Thank, thank you. That's my question.
That's a very good question. Um, before James answers it, I just wanted to make a small point. When you speak with me or when I speak, you're speaking to someone who grew up playing baseball on Babe Ruth Field, who worked in Lomas, who worked at Camp Aven for, I can't tell you how many years. I spent most of my life on, uh, Bonneville Lake in North Broadway. So I grew up loving Sanford, and I've come back to it with my friends and bought all these units. And so, yeah, I am a New Yorker, but at heart, I really think I'm a maniac. So I just throw that on the table. And James, in terms of our timeframe?
Well, it's, I mean, the timeframe is, um, I guess it's with everything, that's the timeframe is. I mean, you guys dictate this stuff to us.
Yeah, in the past, Jeannie Woods come to us and she said, okay, John, you have this violation, that violation, this violation. And she's typically given us a period. Serious things we have to get done in typically, say, 45 days, and, and it, and it varies. And, and we'll meet, we'll meet their timeframe. We'll, we'll do our best to meet them. If I can't meet the timeframe, I'm happy to come back and explain why we can and how we will get it. But we will do everything that the city housing requires us to do.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Um, I guess you guys should, uh, get more available for Ian, uh, whether it's the addresses or phone numbers. And, uh, let's get these units up, okay?
So, um, we're gonna be going on to the, we obviously have an agenda item on this. Um, one of the things, I, I don't know what's gonna happen with the agenda item. There's six of us here. But, uh, one of the things I would like to see within the next week is an inspection. That is a loud inspection, so Aaron can get into the building and see what has or has not been done. Because all that's gonna happen here, potentially, we're either gonna vote to make it dangerous and hazardous, or we're gonna vote to table it to August 1st. Okay, which is, and if nothing has happened and there's been no communication, uh, we have been, we have been doing this readily because we're tired of having properties in difficult situations such as this. So before I read, should I read everything and table it or potentially table it? Or ask if anybody wants to table it first?
Can I just?
Yes, Ian.
So if, if you are to go forward in order. So the order says you have to secure the building within 24 hours. Okay, so that's, that's just standard. It says you need to clean up the yard and, and all the couches and all the junk in 30 days. Okay? And then it says that the city is then, if you don't do that, the city is then authorized to do those things um, within that 30-day window. So we wouldn't be doing anything until 30 days passed. The order's saying you have to do these things within 30 days. Um, and primarily, the concern is securing. So when I was there, there was someone there, and they weren't supposed to be there. I didn't see them, but you know that they're there. And so I'd like to know a little bit about how, how that security is gonna maintain, be maintained. And that's, that's my primary concern with this building is maintaining its security and maintaining its integrity while, while the repairs are made.
It, it sounds to me like that's a very high concern for them as well.
Yeah, it is. In terms of the building. I take your point. We have a custodian, his name is DG, and he's, we're constantly getting new locks. We'll be calling him tomorrow morning to have new locks on and replace that wire thing, holding those two doors together. But we've had the issue of dealing, keeping people the heck out. In terms of someone being there, I, I, I don't believe anyone's there. Okay? And if you heard someone there, it could be our custodian. His name is DG, and I have him, we've had him going through the property and making many, many repairs throughout the day. So I'm, I'm not saying it was, I, I have nothing to hide from you. I don't want anyone to live there. But, um.
Someone's living there.
And we also had another tenant, Phil named Toby, Toby Warrell, that we, he was on public assistance, which was fine with us. We, when we ran into this problem with the homeless, we gave him a unit on our Six Acorn Street building. You guys may know it. We gave him a unit, and we don't charge him rent. We, we need him to get the heck out. Toby's an unusual guy. Sometimes he comes back to the property, even though there's no heat in the property, but all these issues.
He, he, he left his stuff there, um, because he thought the, um, the, the order was gonna be correct right away, that he'd be allowed back. So he never moved everything out. So I don't know if that's what you're referring to. It looks like somebody's left him.
I don't want him to be there. No one should be living there. We're not saying anyone is, we're representing no one. My knowledge is living there. I don't want anyone living there now. Um, Toby's an unusual guy. I don't know if he goes back during the day to do things. I, I don't know. But I'll, I'll change the locks again on him, and I'll tell him, stay the heck out until we have this all straightened out. You mentioned the couches and what have you. Those, we believe, are gone. I mean, those have been.
We, we got texted pictures that it's gone.
Pictures, those have been taken away. So in terms of securing the property, trust me, I'm 100% in your corner. I agree. We'll have new locks put on tomorrow.
So, so what, so I hear what he's saying. He's saying, you know, if you do this for the city, um, because we've, this, this, of the three properties we have this, this evening, this is the one with the most complaints, because of everything's been happening there, okay? So he's saying basically, hey, you do this, they're gonna be mandated to secure it, or we're gonna do it. They're gonna be mandated to clean it up, or we're gonna do it. So basically, we choose to table this instead of 30 days to do a lot of this, seven days and 30 days. You literally have two weeks.
That's fine.
Property's secure, you know, and I, I want Aaron to have an inspection. I think that's important here. But I'm, again, I'm only one vote. This is what's running through my head, because, you know, I don't usually vote to table these, ever. So, Councilor Tranchmontane?
Yeah, gentlemen, this is me again. Um, Councilor Tranchmontane, how about you getting, uh, the information for a custo, your custodian on this place? And get with Ian, so that way he can get in there. There's one, there's one apartment that's blacked out, so there is somebody in your building.
So Aaron is the inspector, Pete, just so you know.
So if you can get with Aaron or, or Ian, whoever you're supposed to from the city, um, that way your custodian can let them in there. And let's, let's, let's do some open communication this way.
All right, that's good.
And if you guys are willing to get these violations done and you are working with us, we'll work with you. And, and we're not, we, we're not really looking to table this because you're gonna have two weeks. But if you're gonna go get it done, uh, we'll see you in two weeks, and we'll work with you.
That's, thank you. That's totally fine. Um, just to be clear, um, I, I heard three things that need to be done. Removing the furniture, removing the truck, and securing the property. Is that correct?
I want to have, Mr. Letterer needs to see the property, the codes enforcement officer, but.
Oh, and the inspection, correct.
It does not say, it does not tell me, it's not saying that you don't have all those other things to do. You still have to do all the rest of that stuff.
Right.
But it's a good, it's a good faith. We may not need to take this step. And again, six people here, I wanna have, I wanna hear from a couple of others. It, we would, we will, we would take this in two weeks if those, if you haven't even made the effort to do any of that. Yeah, or we're not, it's not even gonna, it's, you might as well not show up because your, your words are gonna be nothing. So this is really important. This building is important to us. It's in a, it's in a community. As if you are from, in the Sanford-Springvale area, you know Springvale people do not like this to be happening. It's a, it's even, it's even more sensitive. Um, and so we have had quite a few complaints, especially in the back of the property, which is near commercial property. You have a beautiful property next door to this. This is not a good situation. And again, as, as Mr. Stackpole said, we do need the units in our community. So we really want these units to be operational again. Okay, so does any other counselors, I mean, before I read this, that we can, I can entertain a motion to table the date certain? Um, or we can read this and just, a declaration of dangerous and hazardous doesn't mean you guys can't get this done either. So, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had one question. Um, primarily why that door was left the way it was, unsecured? If you have somebody that's supposedly working there as a custodian full-time? Um, it's, it's kind of a red flag to me. Um, I'd like to give you guys a, a shot at moving this forward without having to go to the dangerous building action. Um, but I do have some concerns that it looks like not really a whole lot's been done. So, um, maybe you could answer that real quick.
Uh, it's a very good question. We weren't aware of it. And, um, communication has been an issue with us ever since we started investing up in Sanford since 2016 with the maintenance guys. Um, um, well, we, we need to stay on top of it more and be more explicit. And, um, well, we're not sure why he didn't tell us that we had an issue with that door. Um, I think it's a little bit of staying too focused on something. We, we have him doing one thing, and he's a little bit like this. And he's focused to get that task done, whatever it is, and he's not telling us. So we, we need to have a talk with him.
Yeah, we were focused on getting all the furniture out, getting that truck out. That's what, leading up to tonight, that's what we've really been focusing on. But, but you're right, on the wire, holding those doors together, it looks terrible and truly crappy. And that'll be the first thing we talk to about it tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, I'm not sure where in New York you guys are, but it might be worth, uh, a weekend drive up just to kind of see where things are at.
Yeah.
Get a first, firsthand view and maybe, uh, you know, stop and get some ice cream machines or something while you're here. But, um, yeah, thank you.
Hopefully it's.
We, I, I look forward to, you know, helping getting this renovated. And we definitely need, you know, more, more apartments in, in Sanford-Springvale. So this is definitely a needed thing. So try to help you move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager Buck, do you have any comments?
I do not.
Okay. Director Halsey, anything further?
Um, depending on, I'm, I'm fine in any direction the city council chooses to go on this. I, my, my primary concern, as I've said, is the security of the building. Uh, there's, it's, it's, it's open. I think, you know, the, the distance is creating a, a lack of management on this. Um, and that, that's concerning, especially this size. That's just getting through the short term. The long-term issue, as you've seen, is, is the stairs and, and, and the access to the building um, and, and rehabbing those units. I, from, from the pictures I took, I wasn't seeing many units that are ready for occupancy. Um, so we can schedule an inspection with, with Aaron to, to, to do a check on those. Um, but, but they're not in a state that's, that's ready for, for, for rental.
What I'm hoping is, um, again, if we decide to table this till August 1st, is that Aaron is in the building, able to get a, a newer, um, look at the situation. The building's secure, yards are cleaned, the yard is cleaned up. Um, and then I'm hoping, is there a sprinkler system? And then I'm hoping, is there a sprinkler system problem here? And that there is some forward, I would like to see some forward momentum, because there's no occupancy without the sprinkler, you being able to find a company to deal with the sprinkler system. And I don't know why you're having a problem with that, actually. And I don't know if, if that's something that we can work, like, work through.
So Aaron has reached out directly to the sprinkler company to, to help them navigate the, the, the order to vacate that's on the side of the building, so that they know-
So that, so that that won't dissuade them from doing the work?
That's right.
Okay, so that's, that's a big one. Then all the stairways and stuff, to me, are extremely important, but not the big can to, to get done. Right? Council Hanson.
So, a concern I have is relative to the October 2019 NOV, and the fact that that didn't carry over to the most recent list of violations. Is that, and I guess what I want to clarify, is that standard operating procedure? Where if I'm a property owner and I have open violations from a prior NOV, I'm not going to see those carried forward? Or shouldn't, I would think I would see the list, like, a ongoing, if you will, real-time list of things that haven't been cleared up? So that piece, to me, feels problematic.
That's why I would like to see Mr. Letterer in there again for a new inspection.
Well, it doesn't become a comprehensive list always. The, the issue that was being dealt with back in January was, was the use of that property at that time. So it's, it was very much the, the water probably caused by tenants, the mismanagement, the, the mishandling of the units by the tenants, the trailer, the drug paraphernalia, those things are in the January. But the rental inspection from, from October 30th, 2019, does list a, a number of items that are, that, that do need to be corrected. And I think, as you pointed out, that was by email. I'm familiar with Mr. Kent's email address. I've seen it before. I've seen it at the, at the top of all these, so I, I do know that it went to that address.
Well-
And I would use a rental agent, guys, unless you want some more squatters. I don't know how you let someone in to measure curtains. I, that's balls of my mind.
We're definitely kicking ourselves, yeah.
I'm a landlord, and yeah, that would never happen, especially, I know the last name, so.
Well, we didn't know the last name, and we, they got us on the right day at the right time. Somebody from Pine Tree called us and said, can you do her a favor, let her, let her in? She, she's going to be homeless if you don't let her in. And our hearts grew bigger than our minds at that moment, and-
And she had a voucher, she said, they, they represented she had a voucher, and we get rent, so.
They usually have a stack of paperwork for you to fill out if they have a voucher.
Well, that, that was going to come later, which it never did.
Okay, Council Stackpole.
Question, Ian, do taxes have to be paid for an occupancy permit? Or the sewer bill need to be paid before you get a, issue an occupancy permit?
They sure do.
We can have that paid before the August 1st date.
Okay.
Okay.
So, message sent and received. Thanks.
Council Hitchcock, and then I'll take a motion from you.
Yeah, I won't belabor every point that's been made here. I just want to make sure that my, my voice is heard about this, since I've been kind of listening. I would like to see, in addition to everything that was presented here today, a plan from you gentlemen about some of the priorities, and, you know, and maybe working with the city, priorities of what needs to be fixed and what order, because I think that maybe a more hands-on approach of managing this property, even though you're from New York, would have prevented this situation from happening. I mean, if we received notices in 2019, and the next notice is not sent to 2023, what happened in that four-year period to not, not understand what was going on the property? And I understand you, you're kind of confused as to why your custodian didn't tell you, but I kind of feel like some active steps forward may have prevented all this from happening. So I think it makes sense that in addition to some of the other things we've suggested are, are asking for, the inspection, the securing of the property, is at least a rough idea. I don't need necessarily timelines, I understand things happen, but a, a priority list of what you intend to work on, if we do intend to push this out to August 1st.
Well, that's going to be your motion, or not motion?
Uh, I can make that a motion.
Oh, I should read the agenda item?
So for August 1st, you would like to see a list of items to be corrected in timeframes to do so?
I, in, in order of priority that I think is most concerning to the city as well.
Well, that, yeah, and that's good, because hopefully Aaron will be in there in the next two weeks. That's my goal, so.
Okay, I, I need to push back a little bit on that one, only because it's hard to put a plan together when we don't know exactly what we're dealing with.
It's not 100% a plan, it's just a, hey, look at the list, you know, this is the list Aaron's giving you, and make sure there's some common understanding of what needs, you know, that everybody's in agreement on what that list entails.
And we're, we're fine with that, it would just be nice to have a new, updated, comprehensive list, because I'm sure, uh, I know we took care of some stuff, I'm sure he'll find other stuff to put on there, so it'd be nice to have that list, the new list first, uh, before we could respond to it.
Let's all have a goal of having these apartments on the market before winter, shall we?
Yes.
I would love it, yes.
All right, that would be a nice goal. So, 23-299-01, before I read all of that, do I want to entertain a motion, Councilor?
I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, I, I think having a fresh baseline with a fresh inspection will help give you that list that you guys need. And help you prioritize with Ian, or whoever you need to work with, to get that done, and get some timelines made up. So I think it should be a priority to have someone in there to, to do that inspection, so you, you've got an updated list, because that last one from, you know, you've got one from earlier this year, which may be incomplete, and then you have one from 2019, but that's, you know, we're talking almost four years ago at this point, so you really would be best served to have as fresh of a list as you can. So I, I'd really try to get someone in there in the next couple of days if you can, maybe before you secure the building even, or around that timeframe, so just my two cents. Thank you.
So basically, the next, so I'm going to close the public hearing, because we do have to get going. We have two other properties, and we do have to see them tonight before we go home, because they've been posted. So the next agenda item is actually, I would read that, and normally we would accept or reject whether we declare it as a dangerous building. Rather than potentially have it rejected, I would rather table it to date certain, August 1st, where we will see where we are at and decide whether or not we want to declare it as dangerous and hazardous. So, that is 23-299-01. Councilor Stackpole?
Move to table.
To. Do the date certain.
August 1st.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Do I have a second on that?
I'd second that.
Okay, there is no discussion on a motion to table? All those in favor? We will see you, gentlemen, on August 1st. I expect activity.
You'll get it.
Please, we need those, we need those units, and Springvale is not happy, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need us to stay on, or can we walk on?
Unless you want to talk about the other properties we're doing, no. You may, you may go home and have a drink. Have a drink for me. Okay. 23-300-01, this is a hearing to determine whether 9 Devotion Avenue identified as tax map R19A, Lot 89, further described in a deed recorded in New York County Registry of Deeds at Book 15662, Page 478, and mortgages recorded at Book 15662, Page 480, and Book 16237, Page 497, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of 17 MRSA Sections 2851-2859. And to determine what, if any remedy is appropriate, I will declare the public hearing open, and I believe this one's vacant. I drove by.
Yes. And I'm going to go much faster on this, because all the material is in the city council's packet. I'm going to point out on the notice of hearing, I was unable to locate Robert and Melissa Boyd, so we did advertise in the newspaper. There are two mortgages on this property, both received their mail on this. I have not received any response from either bank. And I'm going to skip to the utility report in this case. They are current on property taxes. The water's been off since September 14th, 2016. There's no sewer balance. The electrical service is, is not disconnected, it's, it's connected, and there's electrical meter present. This property is current with its vacant building license, it's in its 11th term at this point. So it has been keeping up with a vacant building license, and this was recommended by the land bank for resolution, because it's been sitting so long. It's since between Kennybunk Road and Devotion. I remember, I forgot the subdivision name, just, I heard Rosenfield, yes, down there. And this is a picture of it, it's, it's, it's becoming very dilapidated at this point. There, there's not much, there's no junk around the perimeter, it, someone's mowing the lawn. There is some trash between the steps and, and in the, in the, in the woods, in the, in the trees next to it. The deck, you can see the, the posts here are, are degraded, they're, they're, they're falling. There are holes in the top of it, there's moss growing out of it. Here's another picture of the deck. It's, it's, it's rotting. The building in its entirety is rotting. Uh, it seems to have had severe water damage, it's been stripped. I've asked around as to what, what could happen to this. People think that this is probably a, a full gut, if it's to be used again. This is another picture of the side. Looks like the garage is melting into the ground with the, with the water intrusion.
One of the problems in this neighborhood is a high water table.
It, that's, yes, it has a high water table in this area. You can see the, the mold has, has come up the sides of the walls. I don't know if that was the cause of the building situation, or if this is just what has happened since. I imagine the power's on, because it needs to have a sump pump run continuously. You can see, again, mold on the side. It's empty of, of personal items. Here's some pictures of that. That generally describes what is there. It's, it's, it's dilapidated, the, the, the mortgagee is, is in control of it, it's, it's abandoned and, and vacant at this point. There, Aaron did an inspection on May 8th, most recently. Unsafe and rotting holes in the deck, interior surfaces are deteriorated and unsanitary, there's trash on the property. The exterior, exterior surfaces are unmaintained and rotting, and the concrete is, is cracked, full of moss, and the siding's broken. So it's, it's pretty straightforward. It, it's been vacant for a very long time, it's been without climate control, it seems like it's had flooding damage. It's, it's, it's hazardous from that perspective of abandonment, but just a very straightforward, dangerous building.
Anything to add from Mr. Letterer this evening, or is this one? I can see it's pretty straightforward. I drove, like I said, I drove by it on my bike.
Yeah, so this, we've had a few violation complaints on this property for a few years, just with maintenance from the bank. They're supposed to maintain the property, grass cuts, exterior. They have responded a couple times to getting the grass cut on the outside, but still have not responded to any of the other maintenance that is required to keep the property from dilapitating. So it does qualify to be abandoned and under that definition. Any questions?
No, I just, I see it's a 2009 ownership, 2016 water turned off. This is pretty long-term, so I do have, is there someone on? There's someone on from the other. Do you want to wait, hold questions until? Okay, so, Peter Adrenas?
Yes.
Is that how I say it? Hi, good evening. Would you like to say a few words?
Uh, yes, and I can keep it brief. I represent the bank, US Bank National Association, who has the first mortgage lien on the property, and everything is, was described. The only thing I had to add, and to make sure that the council was aware, is there is a pending foreclosure action, pending action by the court. Most recently, a trial scheduled in February that was continued, and the new date has not been scheduled. Uh, so this is one of many actions that was impacted by COVID, and, and we do not yet have a judgment of foreclosure or the ability to proceed to sale. But that's about the scope of it, and because Houseill pointed out, we have a property preservation team involved, so happy to answer any questions if they have them, but otherwise, just wanted the appearance for the record.
I have a feeling this is more of a help than a hindrance for the, for this particular process, from what I've seen over the few that we've done that have foreclosure. So are there any questions for Mr. Houseill, or Mr. Letterer? Or for the gentleman from the bank?
I just had a quick question. How long has this been abandoned? It sounds like it's, I think I heard 2016, so been a while.
No water since 2016.
Do we know anything more, any more details, or rough timeframe?
Well, it's had a vacant building license for 11 terms, so those are six months' terms, so at this point, five years.
Does the bank know how long that, since the people left the property? Or no?
Uh, I did not. The best information I have is that it has been vacant for a long time. This was a foreclosure impacted by some issues with the assignments of mortgage that delayed its implementation. So I think it's about a 2015 default is what's alleged in the complaint for foreclosure, so it's been a long abandoned property.
These should not last as long as they do, sir. Council Tranchmontaine, do you have a question?
Yeah, Ian, this doesn't seem savable, does it?
My, my, my first instinct was no. I did ask the land bank when we were reviewing for this meeting, just-
And you have builders there.
Putting in those terms. They, they mentioned some other properties in the neighborhood that have been gutted fully, and, and have been salvaged, but they, the two real estate brokers on the, on the committee said that the last time they did this, they, it was a full gut.
Okay. Okay, so if there are no other questions, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed? Okay, we'll move on to the agenda item. I think I'm reading this time. 23-301-01, based on the testimony and other evidence presented at the hearing pursuant to 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859 regarding 9 Devotion, what does the city council find of the facts, and what does the city council adjudge? I'm going to make a motion that based on the testimony of those present and other evidence presented and made part of the record, the Sanford City Council hereby attest to the testimony and evidence and hereby finds the following facts. A, the building, i.e. the property, is abandoned as defined, defined in 30A MRSA Section 3106B and City Code Section 149-6.3, and as evidenced by no water service to the building since September 14, 2016, and no habitable occupancy since that time. Personal property and furnishings are absent, and any remaining personal property is damaged or unusable and generally describable as junk, debris, household trash, and possibly hazardous, and is a fire hazard and is unsanitary. A mortgagee has changed the locks, the code enforcement officer has made a determination of abandonment, and the property has deteriorate, deteriorated so as to constitute a threat to public health and safety, including dilapidated decks, exterior stairs, and other exterior surfaces and interior surfaces. B, the most recent inspection on May 8, 2023, found violations of City Code Section 90-13B Subsection 5, 2015 International Property Maintenance Code as adopted by reference, Section 304.1.1.12, unsafe rotting and holes in deck, Section 305.3, interior surfaces are deteriorated and unsanitary, Section 308.1, trash on property, Section 304.13, window and door openings in poor repair, Section 108.1.5, the building is dangerous, neglected, dilapidated, and an attractive nuisance, 304.2, exterior surfaces are unmaintained and rotting, Section 304.1, concrete is cracked, full of moss, and, and siding is broken. The property is uninhabitable, and C, the property is uninhabitable and may not be occupied without an approved rehabilitation plan. Based on the foregoing findings, the municipal officers have judged that the property is a dangerous building and nuisance because the building is abandoned and unsanitary due to the length of time it has been vacant without climate control, and because of flooding, constitutes a fire hazard because of its state of abandonment, and constitutes a hazard to health and safety because of inadequate maintenance, dilapitation, and abandonment. The property is a public nuisance and must be abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated. I will entertain a second. Council Hanson?
I would happily second that.
Thank you. Are there any comments or conversation? Seeing none, I will take a motion, I'll take a vote, all those in favor? Six to zero. Thank you very much.
Mr. Andreas, if, if, wouldn't mind giving me a call as soon as you're able to, so we can, we can review the, the, the findings?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll circulate an email so you have that and a- I'll circulate an email so you have that and a contact for everyone at the bank.
Thank you.
Twenty-seven Riverside Ave, twenty-three dash three zero two dash zero one. This is a hearing to determine whether Twenty-seven Riverside Avenue identified as tax map K27 lot 49 and further described in a deed recorded in New York County Registry of Deeds at Book 14962, page 46, and mortgages recorded at Book 15670, page 989, and Book 16999, page 435, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859, and to determine what, if any, remedy is appropriate. I will declare the public hearing open. Mr. House Hill?
Thank you. So this is a similar situation. In this case, though, Susan Norman passed away. And this is in heirs of. I'd like to share with you the, the pictures, first of all. This property is on Riverside. It's next to this, the old St. Ignatius Gymnasium. You can see in this aerial photograph that, taken in 2022, that there's just, this is all personal property. These are bureaus and bookshelves and propane tanks and a variety of different things spread around the property. So it's, it's noticeable that, that this property is, is, is abandoned.
Still all there? Is it still?
It is still all there. And there's a picture of the front. You can see some of the debris that's around. Pictures of, of the debris. Here's what I'm mentioning, and it's, it's been like that for that long. When I, when I went to the property last Tuesday, Tuesday, what became most concerning to me was the lack of security on this property. This is an open window right here. You can gain access to the building. Here's pictures of the, the, the things that are rotting in the backyard, the furniture. This is a picture through the window. There was concern raised that this might be confidential information as the, the person was a mortgage originator. But I have spoken with their counsel, and they said that none of this information is personal or business-related at this point. So that, that concern is not, not, not the case. This is generally how it looks inside. In, in my opinion, it looks like someone might have gotten inside. I said, describe it as being ransacked. But, and when I visited, the door was open. I did close it, pulled it shut and locked it, but, but someone, it was left wide open. This picture of the, the sheds, variety of different things in there, different gas tanks, AC, air, air-conditioning equipment. I didn't take a picture. There is a propane tank in there as well. This is a picture of the garage, just generally full of junk. This is, there's, seems to be a basement to this garage as well. That's, that's unlocked and open. The property is being maintained in some shape or fashion. You can see that this is an upturned chair that had been recently mowed around. So, so that, there's partial completion of what property managers do for vacant buildings, but not, not in the entirety. Another picture of the side of the building, excuse me. And another picture of the interior. Seems to be a, a building that is quite salvageable, and I think that, that was the primary concern of the land bank was that, well, given its insecurity or unsecurity, that it was at risk of being damaged beyond repair. So that's why you're hearing about it tonight. I did speak with a Matthew Bowen. I believe I saw his name on the screen a little while ago.
He is here.
And I was able to make contact with them through the prior owner. He told me that the property is actually changing hands on July 23rd. Today, I spoke with a property management company, relayed to them the, the, the concerns about the securing on an immediate basis for, for, for preserving the property. And then we also discussed a timeframe pursuant to the order for, for having the yard cleaned out and then also the personal items inside. And they said that it's, in, in, in an immediate, in an immediate sense, they could, they could meet the need to secure it, and we, we can have further discussion about the, the, the exterior after they have control of the property. So it, it does meet the definition of, of abandonment. We've been through that as, as well. I've talked about it. It is in a mortgage, the mortgagee's hands. They have changed the lock. There is management of it in that way. In this case, there is no vacant building license on it. Aaron has been, not been able to, to obtain one. He did list violations from March 15, 2023, damaged siding, piles of discarded household items and overgrown vegetation. I note that the property is unsecure, and there's, there's no one taking responsibility for securing and maintaining the property. Very straightforward. Abandoned and vacant building in this case, again. I'm open to any questions that you have, and I appreciate them.
Okay, so Mr. Bowen, would you like to speak before we ask questions?
Yes, I would, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to. So as was stated, I represent the mortgage servicer, which is Carrington Mortgage Services, and the actual mortgagee of record, which is Wilmington Savings Fund Society, FSBS trustee of the Stanley Mortgage Trust F. And before I get into some of my prepared points, I do want to correct the record on a couple of things. I spoke with the personal representative's attorney, and he indicated to me that the personal representative, Sidney Robinson's head, she has gotten all her personal effects or out of the home that she cares about. I apologize if there was some miscommunication, and I may have led the city to believe that those records are or are not confidential. We don't know that information. And so if she wasn't, the decedent was a mortgage originator, we, we do share the concern that maybe those paperwork could be confidential, and we would want to secure those in a prompt manner. So I apologize if there's a miscommunication that those were not confidential records. We don't know that information at this time. And I, I want to correct that record from our previous conversation. The second thing I want to provide clarity on is the July 23 change of hands. That's not when the actual change of ownership will happen. That's when the right of redemption will expire for the, the estate. So under main law, they are entitled to 90 days after the judgment in a foreclosure. So July 23rd is when that right of redemption expires. After the right of redemption expires, then the mortgagee can list the property in a public notice for sale. So there actually won't be a change in ownership for probably a 60-day timeframe or more. So I, I did just want to make those quick corrections. There, there's a few points I, I kind of want to draw attention to. And, you know, as has been made aware, this property kind of fell into foreclosure and probably its current condition because of the passing of the decedent. And while the bank received notices of the dangerous building hearing from a legal standard, and, and we are not contesting that, I'd like to note that while the person who signed for it on May 22nd at Carrington received it, that information doesn't always get upchanneled to the right person. And a lot of times, the easiest people to get ahold of are us, local council. I, I work in South Portland. I live here in Maine. I'm, I'm coming to you from Brunswick, Maine, tonight. I appreciate that you all have a Zoom option, so I was able to spend some time with my daughter tonight. And, and so we received notice at my law firm on last Thursday, despite the clerk cert for the foreclosure being recorded in August of '22, and then the judgment being recorded in June of '28. And both of those items had Cordae and Associates' phone number, address, emails, which would have been the quickest and easiest way to get ahold of local council, who could have escalated some of these issues in a more expedient timeframe. And so I'm not contesting that we, we didn't receive legal notice. We absolutely did, my client did. But, you know, I'm here tonight because the city reached out to me on Thursday, and I was able to advise my client of an issue that the right parties at Carrington might not have been aware of. And, and so to that end, you know, I, I'd like you to keep that in mind as, you know, when I get to my kind of final ask on the matter. Now, it, it's been articulated that, you know, some of the conditions in this property, you know, maybe ransacked, the main concern being not secure. There's some violations of the siding. But, you know, I would put before the council that some of those conditions don't necessarily meet the definition of a dangerous building when you look at the, the case law, and even comparatively to some of the cases that came before this council tonight. You know, you, you see a lot of the, the cases that have gone up to the law court. You're talking about sagging roofs, chimneys in disrepair, cracks in the brick in the walls that were just mortared and painted over, cracks in floor joists, you know, walls starting to buckle, sagging roof, improper foundation. And then even just in the cases tonight, prior to me, you know, we had seven mills, roof leaking, standing water, the electrical wire coiled around a mailbox and stuffed in the mailbox, significant mold in nine devotion. So I, I really think our property, in terms of what you observed in the pictures, is really distinguishable both from the cases before you this evening and, and some of the cases you would see in the case law. And, and so to that end, you know, we were asking that you give us grace and maybe delay any implementation of a finding of a dangerous building so that we can get our property preservation taking a more proactive measure and getting some of that trash taken care of, and allowing the, myself as counsel to be, you know, in, in communications with the city and in communications with my clients, and helping to facilitate some of the remediation that should happen. You know, I, I've sat through the whole hearing tonight from, from your opening remarks until this point. And, you know, I understand, you know, like many places in Maine, Sanford's dealing with a significant housing issue, and it's in everybody's best interest to get these properties turned around as quickly as possible. And the way that's going to happen, the, the, the way this is going to happen for this property is to not find it a dangerous building tonight. Because if we put that order on the record, if we put that on the title, you know, it could dissuade potential buyers at the auction because they might feel like there's this ticking time bomb, whereas if they go and bid at this, at auction, and there's already this finding of a dangerous building, are they going to be able to turn this property around in time enough to avoid any fines, penalties, or in a worst case demolition? So, you know, I want to reemphasize the, the right of redemption expires in five days. That immediately is going to trigger our office noticing this for sale. That sale will happen in about 35 days from the right of redemption, so about 40 days from now. And then, and then we'll be able to close on the property with whoever the winner is. That could be back to bank, that could be a third party. And we do have a healthy amount of buyers that come to our auctions, and they're bidding on these properties, and, and they're investing in various communities in the state of Maine. And a finding of a dangerous building, it could dissuade some of that investment interest in this property and might exasperate the situation more so than remediate in a more quickly timeframe. Now, my last point is on the security, and, and we, we definitely should be taking accountability of that. And I'm, I'm glad that our property preservation team that represents the client is going to be taking a more active role. The, the statutes do differentiate between a dangerous building and an unsecured building. You can have an unsecured building without having a dangerous building. And that differentiation is made between 17 MRS, 2851, and 2856, because 2856 says, "in addition to the other proceedings." And, and so if the council feels it's necessary to make an order that, you know, puts some teeth behind, "you shall secure this building," we're, we're not going to oppose, we're not going to object to that. We understand we, we have that responsibility, and we need to take that responsibility more proactively. But I want to make clear that, you know, you have the authority under the statutes to, to make a finding in an order related to securing the property that is wholly distinct from a finding in an order that it's a dangerous building. And, and so with that, I'll entertain any questions from the council.
Question, Council Transmontane?
This is Council Transmontane. Thank you for giving us the time of day. Appreciate it. What I want to know is, on the securing the building, how quick can you do it? You know, you, you have responsibility to this building, and it's not secured. So give me a timeframe. When can you secure that window that's smashed out that the homeless can get in? That's going to ruin that building.
And, and so I would have to converse with property preservation and figure out what their timeframe is. I, I can't give you an intelligent answer on that. I can tell you that if we don't meet our obligations in securing that and the city takes action, you know, we understand that, you know, there, there is a difference between securing the building and, and a dangerous finding as a dangerous building. So it would be our goal to secure the building as promptly as possible. Like I said, we found out about this, my firm found out about this on Thursday. So in different dangerous building hearings I've had, I've had a lot more time to speak with property preservation. I've had time to speak with the client. I've been able to gather up the information and come before, you know, different city councils with a lot more information. So I apologize that I don't have that information. I don't have that direct line of communication with the property preservation team that I have had in other instances. And that's because our firm was engaged to come here tonight on Thursday because that was when the notice we got from the city. And I, I fully recognize that our client received legal notice. I'm not disputing that. I'm just saying sometimes the information, it doesn't percolate through these larger institutions quickly.
So this goes through you to get it secured, though, right? And you, you can address this as, as immediately? Am I correct, or is this going to be another 30 days, 45 days, that that smashed-out window is going to be vacant? It's going to be wide open for the homeless? And we have a homeless crisis in our city. And I guarantee it's been ransacked in there.
So I'm going to, so a couple of things. A, this, this process has never dissuaded buyers. We've actually had more properties that have been rehabbed. It just tends to keep people on their toes and, and know that we're serious. Second, we just did a property where they've been getting foreclosure since 2015, and they still haven't managed, and the property has become destroyed and in worse condition because of it. So the whole foreclosure process and dealing with the banks getting properties turned over is, has not worked well in many instances within our community, mostly because, you know, poor lending practices starting back, you know, before the 2008. So, you know, we, there is a process to, to register abandoned property. That was, that was, and we asked for a local, which could have been you, a local representative that we can work with and that we have information on. This doesn't do really much, other than, as Mr. House Hill said, This doesn't do really much, other than, as Mr. Housiel said earlier, you're required to secure it within seven days, clean up the property within 30 days and provide an action plan for the rest of the work that needs to be done.
Within 30 days.
Within 30 days. We've had many people come, several, I can remember probably a handful of people come and say, "Hey, I'm buying the property. Do you have to do this?" And we did. They still bought the property, they rehabbed the property and all is well. It disappears after that. So nothing necessarily that you've said dissuades me from declaring it tonight because I'm actually, who knows next week what's going to happen on the 23rd? It could be that you actually do have someone decide to file and the bank doesn't obtain the clear rights to do something with the property. You're saying someone can file for, what was the word you used?
Redemption. So the right of redemption is a statutory right. So what that means is the PR, in this case, the personal representative could pay off the loan between now and July 23rd. And if she pays off the entire amount owed, we have to basically terminate the foreclosure. That is what the right of redemption is. The right of redemption requires a full payment of the loan. I've spoken with the personal representative's attorney. She has no intention of doing that. It was a consented judgment anyways. You know, they helped facilitate this to a closure because the personal representative had no intention of keeping the home for her late mother. And so I can't say never, but I do not anticipate anybody redeeming the property in the next five days. And once that right of redemption expires, we will post it for, we'll notice it in the newspaper for sale, which would occur about 30, 45 days, 35 to 40 days after that right of redemption expires. And then, so it'll go to an auction. The auction occurs right there in South Portland at our office. We, you know, because of COVID, we started gathering around the flagpole as our meeting place and that's kind of just stuck. And so we'll have, you know, a couple, three, sometimes a half dozen interested parties show up and they'll bid. And sometimes the bank winds up the high bidder and sometimes it's a third party. And, you know, you're correct in saying that a finding of a dangerous building might not dissuade all buyers, but it could dissuade some. And we just want to try to create as much incentive as possible for as many possible bidders so it doesn't wind up in a back to bank situation. Because a local third-party buyer, one of our, you know, frequent flyers, regulars, they're going to be able to turn this around at such a faster pace than a bank our property preservation team would. And so we want to create the atmosphere where the most buyers feel comfortable coming to the auction and bidding.
Any other questions from counselors? Okay. All right, I will read it and we can an up and down vote.
I just wanted to say about the order itself. I mean, these are very much a partnership with the bank in every situation that we've done these. And these rehabilitation plans have never dissuaded potential buyers. It's actually created a positive work relationship. And then in the end, they're able to have all the findings in order released. And they always become success stories where the situations can get a lot worse. I was completely unaware that the building was unsecure until I went there on Tuesday, that it had been possibly broken in. At least the glass had been broken. The furniture in the backyard has been sitting there for, since over a year at this point with nothing done about it. And there's some cases where the city can move more swiftly than a foreclosing agent because they don't have control at this point. And so with this order, in some cases, in partnership with the bank, we're able to act swiftly, secure the building, clean up the property and work in partnership to make sure that we're along the way reimbursed.
So a quick question. So we usually give 30 days for rehabilitation plan. Given the fact that they're intending to go to auction, has there been an extension of that ability to do a rehabilitation plan so that the potential new buyer would be the one presenting it as opposed to someone who's actually not going to do the work?
And I'll say that they always are. We always want that rehabilitation plan from the new buyer. I'll say that the requirement is, whether it's the existing owner, the new owner, or the future buyer, they need to have a vacant building license. I think the worst scenario here is not do the order. Well, the worst scenario is have someone break in, severe damage done to this building. The second worst scenario is that have go to auction, nothing then happened with it, it's vacant, the new owner refused to get a vacant building license and then we find ourselves in the situation a year and a half from now.
Okay.
May I make kind of like a final rebuttal?
This is, okay.
I do just want to reemphasize that the council has the authority to place an order for securing the building that is distinguished from finding it a dangerous building. And that when you look and you compare and contrast this particular property with the properties before you tonight and you compare and contrast this property with the facts and the plethora of case law that's been adjudged by the law court, it's apples and oranges. This is a preventative measure. Your guys' concern is you want this secured so this doesn't become like my colleague Peter Andreenis's case before you where, you know, it's just completely, you know, destroyed. And so I understand and I respect the desire to get this secured. But, you know, I would emphasize that I do not believe the exterior trash and the code violations create the same level of legal definition as a dangerous building as defined by the statutes in case law. And so I would encourage you to place an order for securing and differentiate that order from an order declaring it a dangerous building.
Counsel Hansman?
So I get the sense I'm in the minority here, which is not necessarily unusual. But when I saw this on the agenda and having it be a property I'm often by, not in the backyard, but walking around the front of it, I was surprised that this property, out of so many listed on the land bank's properties of concern, made it to the council level. So I understand it's abandoned and missing a license, which should be resolved. But to me, it doesn't, I don't disagree. I don't feel like it hits some of those key facts of being dangerous to life of property at this point. So I guess my question, did I see a police report in the documents for this property?
There was one.
Okay. It wasn't coming up quickly.
I can bring it up again.
So you, Ian, said that you didn't realize it was unsecured. And, you know, we're having so many issues in town, even with homes that are occupied, thank you, having issues with people entering them. So we've had one recent false alarm at that site. So it hasn't been a problem with the police department as of this point. Certainly it could be and I appreciate that concern. But it's interesting to me, I guess, and this is more a statement, that this property is coming forward to us when there are others in such vast, much more disrepair and more problematic to me when I look around our community. So I'm just saying that out loud.
Well, I mean, I'd say that I just respectfully disagree in that case. It came from the land bank commission. They're the ones that wanted to bring this before the city council. The, first of all, it's an attractive nuisance. That's attractive nuisance.
Seeing people are attracted to it and when they, if it looks abandoned, then they could potentially go into the property and then that's where the potential hazard is, is what they could do while they're in the property.
Yep, it's noticeable. You know, I showed you the aerial photographs at the beginning. You could see that there's, it looks like someone has thrown all their stuff out. As far as the criteria, the criteria of dangerous is abandonment. And those are well outlined. It's an exhaustive list. And the nature of the building itself, that it looks ransacked and those are, that's part of the abandonment that's going on. So I think it would be a mistake to wait till it reaches a level of dilapidation 10 years on before making sure that it's protected. That would be the rationale that I would use. The order does include an order of securing. That's an order of securing within 24 hours. It does talk about the exterior. And then it authorizes up to demolition. It doesn't authorize, you know, in this case, we hope for reservation. But it could burn tomorrow, let's say. So you are authorizing that removal action. But we do hope for a rehabilitation plan that will get it rehabbed. And in the meantime, like I said, we can work proactively with the mortgage company to help them secure it. And in some cases, we have been successful in cleaning out the interior of it where they don't have that authorization for potentially 45 days when we have that authorization sooner.
Deputy Mayor, are you on the land bank?
I'm not, Nate and...
Okay. And I guess for my fellow counselors on the land bank, in your esteem, you feel like this is one of the top three worst properties in our community right now that needs action taken?
So I can respond briefly on that. While I would say that this is not one of the most dilapidated of all buildings, I understand, I've had a chance to go through some of these other areas as well. The biggest, I think the biggest concern here was a sense of security, given the fact that there could very well be confidential documents in there that we don't know about. And so I think this is why this one, this property sort of came to the forefront because of this increased risk of potential security issues that could come about, especially given confidential information, everything out and about. And I understand it's also in a very, you know, I'd say populated area that has some decent foot traffic. And so I think this is what, one of the reasons why this property came up to the forefront of the land bank. Because of, you know, I understand it's not the most dilapidated of properties and maybe it's not the most dangerous of properties. You know, I understand the distinguishing here that we've been talking about here today. But, you know, in the day, this is something that is, it is something that meets the definition based off of what we've been told here as a dangerous building, based off of abandonment, you know. And I understand it may not be the most dilapidated of them, but it's still one we have to deal with. So I understand maybe there may be a question of prioritization. But this was one that, given the, I guess, the potential of how bad this could get, I think this is why this is something the land bank wanted to push forward.
Yeah, and also, this is Counsel Trasmontane. When we went over it on land bank, we also went over the outside, the side in the broken, some broken windows. It seems somebody painted the aluminum siding on there and it caused warping. So, you know, that's all got to come down. The backyard has to be secured. There are so many things for dangerous people to get hurt out back there. We had a shelter temporary next door for the asylum seekers. So we can't have this. This is our main concern, it's not safe with everything. If you look at all the pitches out back, it's just not safe. And then that's where I'm stuck. That's why I recommended it to go further to city council to take this. Because this could be a really nice home, the way it's set up. This is worth pushing this to get a family in here. This is worth protecting this property. And that's why I chose that it should go to city council for a dangerous building. This will move this along. So, thank you.
Counsel Sackel?
Yeah, just an observation. I mean, if, you know, we've been sitting through this meeting tonight. We've kind of, it's really been focused on the homeless problem that we have in our community. Kind of all roads met in one place here this evening. But if I owned this building, I'd be running down there tomorrow morning and making sure that it was secure, you know, so...
It's kind of ground zero for the activity.
People aren't in there. And you've, unfortunately, or you've heard the unfortunate history of other buildings that are not secured in our community with regards to people getting inside them. And as Director Housiel said, the building could burn down tomorrow. And I don't think anybody will be surprised at this point. So, yeah, that's my motivation, is let's get this secured and safe for the community. So, and I think to do that, we have to move ahead. And to do that in time and fashion, we have to move ahead and approve the dangerous building. Peace.
Are there any other comments? So it may not be the worst in our community, but it definitely, to our mind, I mean, to many of our minds, it reaches the definition because it has been abandoned. I don't know what to say. Is anybody, yes, counselor?
I'll just make a couple of comments. So unfortunately, pretty much, you know, I would like to see this minimally secured. And unfortunately, it doesn't seem like the responsible parties have made an effort to do anything to this property for a while. And I know the dangerous building title sort of seems like a pretty heavy hammer. And it would be, maybe that's something we can kind of work on as something that's a little bit lighter. But maybe in the, I guess in the future, you know, having, I know you guys just got notice last Thursday, but the fact that you couldn't say that we can have that secured in 24 hours is a bit concerning to me. Because all it would really need is some plywood on that window and maybe the door fixed or a lock replaced. So I'm kind of with Ann on this one a little bit. I think that it seems like we should be able to just get it secured. But we really need to have the building secured and, you know, have some assurances that the next owners are going to move forward with keeping, moving this building towards sale and repair. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to read it. We'll see what happens and see where the dust lies. Yes, yes. I have to close the hearing first, so I'm going to close the public hearing. 23-303-01, based on the testimony and other evidence presented at the hearing pursuant to 7 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859 regarding 27 Riverside Avenue, what does the city council find of the facts and what does the city council judge? I'll make a motion that based on the testimony of those present and other evidence presented and made part of the record, the Sanford City Council hereby attest to the testimony and evidence and hereby finds the following facts. The building, i.e. the property, is abandoned as defined in 30A MRSA Section 3106-B and City Code Section 149-6.3. And as evidenced by, no water service to the building since December 29th of 2021 and no habitable occupancy since that time. Windows are broken, personal property and furnishings are absent or any remaining personal property is damaged or unusable and generally describable as junk, debris, household trash, and possibly hazardous and is a fire hazard and is unsanitary. A mortgagee has changed the locks. The owner is deceased and there is no evidence that an heir or personal representative has taken possession. The code enforcement officer has made a determination of abandonment and the property is inadequately maintained so as to constitute a threat to public health and safety, including unsanitary and unsafe exterior debris and junk, lack of security of the building, and that is, it is an attractive nuisance. B, the most recent inspection on March 15, 2023, found violations of City Code Sections 90-13B Subsection 5, 2015 International Property Maintenance Code as adopted by reference, Section 304.1, damaged siding, Section 308.1, piles of discarded household items, Section 302.4, overgrown vegetation. C, the building is unsecure. D, the person responsible for securing and maintaining the property is lacking, is lacking, wait. A person responsible for securing and maintaining the property is lacking, constituting a hazard to health and safety. E, the property is uninhabitable and may not be occupied without an approved rehabilitation plan. Based on the foregoing findings... plan. Based on the foregoing findings, the municipal officers adjudged that the property is a dangerous building and nuisance based, because the building is abandoned and unsanitary due to the length of time it has been vacant and without climate control, constitutes a fire hazard because of its state of abandonment and lack of security, and constitutes a hazard to health and safety because of inadequate maintenance, abandonment, and lack of security. The property is a public nuisance and must be abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated. I will entertain a motion for a, or a second for the motion, sorry.
Second.
Okay. I think we've kind of all commented on this one. Do we have a vote? All those in favor? All those opposed? Sorry, Ian. Okay. This is the big, like, where we do them all together. So we're going to be skipping over twenty-three dash three oh four point oh one, because we tabled the agenda item till August first. So twenty-three dash three oh five dash zero one and twenty-three dash three oh six dash zero one, taken together. After hearing testimony and other evidence presented and then made, then making findings of fact and if, findings of fact, and then judging nine Devotion Avenue and twenty-seven Riverside Avenue to be dangerous buildings or a nuisance pursuant to seventeen MRSAs, sections two eight five one dash two eight to two eight five nine, the city council now makes the following orders to abate the nuisance and appropriate corrective actions taken. It is ordered that to protect the health, safety, and welfare, the properties are to be immediately secured within 24 hours, and be it further ordered that to protect the health, safety, and welfare, the nuisance is to be immediately abated by removing and disposing of any and all rubbish, debris, vehicles, equipment, household, human, hazardous waste, and dangerous materials from the property, and be it further ordered that to protect the health, safety, and welfare, the said dangerous building and nuisance is to be immediately abated, building removed, disposed, secured. And be it further ordered if the owner or property in interest demonstrates the ability and willingness to satisfactorily rehabilitate the property by submitting and having a rehabilitation plan approved by the city manager within thirty days of recording this order, and carrying out such rehabilitation plan in a timely manner, the order to immediately abate the nuisance may be delayed. Such rehabilitation plan must include, at a minimum, all deficiencies listed as part of the findings of fact, as herein set forth, are corrected. The property is rehabilitated and brought into compliance with all applicable state and local codes, and meets all permitting and inspection requirements, and there shall be no occupancy or use of the building until the property has been satisfactorily rehabilitated. And be it further ordered that the city clerk order, record this order in the York County Registry of Deeds, and cause attested copies of this order to be served upon the persons as required by law, and be it further ordered that if this order is not complied with, the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to ask for the bids for the abatement of the said nuisance, and be it further ordered that if this order is not timely complied with and no timely appeal is taken, the city manager may undertake the order corrective action at municipal expense, and recover all expenses, including reasonable attorney's fees, by means of a special tax or civil action. This decision may be appealed to Superior Court pursuant to main civil, main rule of civil procedure eighty B. Do I have a motion for those two? Counselor Sekul.
Move, we approve the motion.
Thank you. Second, Councilor Transmontane?
I second.
Okay. Any comments, questions? All those in favor? I should have separated them.
I mean, just as point of clarification, this is separate from the declaration of the building being dangerous. So though I may have voted against that motion for one of the properties, now that the council majority deemed the property dangerous, I can vote separate, I can approve this. So it's confusing, I think, to taxpayers or citizens that I would vote in favor, but there's, you declared it, so now I...
And we, and this actually occurs again in two weeks. And when does this get filed in the courthouse? Only after that?
So as, as far as the request of council, so you're going to do a confirmation hearing again on, on August first, and then it'll be recorded in the registry of deeds, and attested copies will be sent to the owner after that. It doesn't take effect until thirty days after it's received. So we're really talking about some time in the middle of September, by the time the order takes effect. If securing's needed, we can do that before, as, as the opposing council referenced on regarding that particular statute regarding securing.
I think it would be great if we could address the concerns of the attorney who just spoke, because I don't, if he's worried about it potentially affecting people coming into bid, you know, maybe withholding the recording until after he has that, that auction. I don't know if that's going to be, if that's possible, but I'm just going to, I'm going to throw that out as options to try to, to try to help their situation in order, that they have more bidders. I don't think it's an issue, to be honest with you, but...
No, and I haven't found it to be an issue at all.
It's a concern, and I think it's, and it's a concern he obviously has. So I, I think, you know, if you're delaying it a little bit until he has that auction, if the bank buys it back, obviously, put it through. But if it's, if it's someone else, you know, then they just know that it's a local thing. It's, and they have to, they're going to have to work with you. I don't think the recording is as important in that particular instance. All right. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor. Thank you. Oy, oy, oy. What time is it?
Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ian.
How'd this happen? Okay. Council member comments. We've had a long evening, but I know there are comments, because Peter's going to speak. Council Transmontane?
Well, I just wanted to thank all the city of Sanford for the parade that we went through on July fourth. It was pretty awesome, even though we all got soaked. I don't think any of us will ever forget that. I'll do it again next year if it rains. I wanted to thank the city itself for showing up, and I want to make sure that all the kids got candy, because we tried really hard, everybody there to get it. All right. Thank you.
You would have given them a dozen cookies if you could have pulled it off, you know? Each child, I guess, got some stack pull.
Well, I was able to avoid the rain on the parade day, because I was driving Pete's truck. So I had a great time. Actually, everybody had a great time. And I've said before, and I'll say it again, we went through COVID, where we didn't have the parades, and I actually forgot how much fun it is to participate in these parades, and for the last couple of years. I don't, I don't think I've missed one for the last couple of years, just because it's just a, a fun thing to do, and get out with the community, fellow counselors, all that kind of stuff.
And I got a espresso for anything.
Yeah, you get a free coffee, that's right. You deserved it for, you guys get, you guys were wet rats, I think, is what, is what we used to call them, right? Wet rats. You guys got soaked.
Okay. Other comments? Counselor Martell?
Yeah, I just wanted to second some of the comments about the parade. We definitely got soaked, but it was a great time, and it was, it was great to see so many people come out and participate. Saw a lot of pop-up canopies and umbrellas, but it seemed like the kids had a great time, and, and all the adults seemed like they were having a good time as well, so.
By Hannahford, by Hannahford CVS, we had a lot of sympathy.
Yeah.
Yeah. We were definitely looking like, like soaked rats at that point. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Hitchcock?
I'll, I'll be brief, I promise. I also just want to echo the great support that came out for the, for the parade despite that torrential downpour. I think it just shows to reflect that a lot of, a lot of people here in the city care about the city, and they care to make it better. You know, even here today with maybe some heavier comments and, you know, heavier news, everyone here is speaking because they care. And I just want to make sure that's reflected, and keep speaking up and keep caring about the city, because it's a, it's a great one.
Okay. So, future agenda items, we know that public safety has its work cut out for it. I think they're going to have quite a bit. Counselor Martell?
Yeah, I had something I wanted to add to. Probably public safety would make the most sense, but I had some, people reach out to me about some of the panhandling that's going on and potentially creating just safety hazards in the roadways. They had a near miss with accidents, so maybe that's something we can discuss, we can bring that up.
I wonder if you can license that?
I think other cities have run into issues with trying to regulate that, so I definitely want people to have their First Amendment rights, and I think that's usually where it ends up landing, but, you know, just trying to make sure we can keep people safe as well.
I just try to educate people that panhandling, actually, the majority of it is a business.
Yeah, I was surprised. I, I know that there's, or I at least suspect that a lot of the people that do that are actually, that's sort of their job.
Employed, yep.
Yeah, it's a scam.
Yeah, it's pretty much a scam. But, you know, there are some people that legitimately, legitimately need help too, so.
That's true. You're right. Yes, Counselor Hitchcock will go down the line. Counselor Hitchcock?
One thing I thought would be helpful for the community and for everyone listening in is, we were talking about, I believe one of the people speaking here today is about getting like a list of people, of organizations that can help with not only, you know, the asylum seekers and what they need, but also our general, our resident homeless population, and anyone who's looking to help and have that sort of centralized discussion. Well, I definitely think we should also have that posted like on our website and things like that. Maybe it's worth inviting people if they want to come here to city council, give a brief communication presentation, explaining what they do, and putting a face in the name. So just, maybe just reaching out to them and offering the invitation.
And I think we have a, a list started that where you can give clothing and food, and there is something on the website, but to have them come and introduce themselves and what they do, and maybe give us a better connection to that organization is not a bad idea. Counselor Transmontane?
Yeah, I just want to touch bases again with, with everybody on the council and city manager to better understand housing first model with Diane Small, so we can actually, I know it's under new agenda, so that's why I'm saying it here, so we can get that rolling.
Right. I know the mayor's already started a discussion with the Sanford Housing Authority about when's the next, because we've had housing workshops before, and we know it's time for another one. So I know it's in the works. I don't know if it's going to be August or September, if she's mentioned anything. We've talked about it a little bit, but we haven't really set a date for it.
When did we, when did we have the last, the last big one? Was it last year, or was it two years ago?
It's been over a year.
We had like three different groups in there.
But it's a little over a year, though, right? I think it's a little over. I mean, the, the commitment was annually, I remember, or thereabouts.
I would just suggest, as you're looking at that schedule, that August is our last month of summer, and we consider...
That's why I keep sending September, because I agree with you.
We consider pushing it.
I do not disagree.
It's not, it's not important. I just was curious.
Oh, September twenty-seventh. So if we're going to wait a year, it'll be more like September, October. I actually like that, too. I'm on Ann's side on that one. Because adding Tuesdays, I like the, I like to not add Tuesdays if we don't have to. Counselor Hansman?
Thank you. I'm not sure that this isn't necessarily an agenda item, honestly. It might just be something that can be resolved with, with the butter and then update sent via email to counselors. But I've been contacted by a butters to parcel R eight forty, that there's some flooding issues caused by apparently beavers that's been unaddressed. And I did drive by. I'm not, obviously, there's a lot of water around these days, so I'm really not sure the scope of the issue myself, or have any sense of what the resolution is. But if we could, they had talked to Public Works several times, but then has kind of been ghosted recently. So I'd like an update if we can. It's R eight forty off Harry Howes Road.
Oh, up there, okay.
Yeah. And I don't know if it's a little stream that, again, I'm not, I drove by, it's wet.
So, you know, so Ann, I actually bought a book called Beaverland. I think it's relatively new. I got it for like a buck nine nine. Now, now, I have to read it, because I'm keen to hearing beaver stuff. But it's how beavers have been like probably the most impactful on our landscape. The work, the work they do changes the landscape.
I think the butters are worried it's going to impact their landscape.
I think so, too. I think so, too.
In their basements, probably, yeah.
In their basements, exactly.
And they give you jardine, so speed twelve pence, go down, and take it.
Maybe, maybe we should make sure the good old library has a copy, so that we can recommend that people take it out and read it, if they're having beaver issues.
Doesn't the, it's sort of on topic, but off topic. I'm going to look at Steve. Doesn't the warden service relocate those, or they used to anyways? I don't know what they...
We could spend an hour on this topic. No, no, seriously.
No need to.
You know, Parks and Recreation, they've, they've got...
I'm not voting for them needing to go beyond ten o'clock, Steve.
They've got beaver deceivers out there right now, that were, that were released, were recently impacted by unsolicited activities, so there's that issue. A lot of difficulty in controlling beavers now. You know, it used to be a natural control. They were being trapped for their fur, because there was value there. Trapping is almost non-existent. It's hard to find trappers to come out to, to, to do this anymore. So now this company, the companies are charged with very high rates to put in beaver deceivers and such that are less than operational and such under that. And you can't go out and simply dispatch these animals any longer, so it's difficult.
I saw, I saw a post on Facebook where someone took a picture of a mother beaver and a baby beaver, and they're going, oh, and I'm like, oh, that's not a good thing. Poor beavers. They are kind of cute. Plus, aren't they the animal in the Lion, the Witch and the Wardrobe that they, she first sees when she goes across to Narnia? I think so. She lives in a beaver house. Oh, no, Larissa likes beavers. Okay. She likes all the animals. Okay. Do we have any other future agenda items?